First, we acknowledge that the land in which we gather is the traditional unceded territory of the Mi'kmaq First Nation. Call to order. I just want to thank Deputy Mayor Yankoff and Steve for hosting the council and senior staff party last night. Thank you very much. It was a good time. And I want to recognize our interim Director of Community Services, Sue Fraser. This is Sue Fraser's last regular monthly meeting. I think she will be leaving us on Thursday and then coming back next week cleaning out her office. I think we'll have to get security to come in with you on that, right? But on behalf of myself, I just want to say that she showed way above professional service during her time here. I know that she was an excellent director with our former interim CAO Donna Waddell, and then she worked closely with our new CAO Eleanor Muhammad and worked with staff. So on behalf of myself, Sue, I wish you all the best in your, what, second or third retirement? And it's been a pleasure working with you, so thank you very much. And you can be like Donna and watch the proceedings on whether it's committee level or council. No, not me. And lastly, I just want to wish you all a Merry Christmas from Lori, Phillip, Alec, and Emma Louise. Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. Okay. We have approval of the agenda. I need someone to move the approval. Counselor Ramsey, second by Counselor Beck. All those in favor? Now, we're using the hands. We were to use the online voting, but one counselor's not here, and therefore we're not able to do it. So when we have a full council, we'll be doing it on the monitors.
(inaudible)
Yeah. Number four, adoption of previous draft minutes. We have regular meeting November 14th, 2023. Special meetings November 24th, 25th, and 27th, 2023, and a public planning meeting November 28th, 2023. Moved by Deputy Mayor, second by Counselor Ramsey. All those in favor? Okay. Any business arising out of the minutes? Counselor Beck, Ward three.
Yes. I guess just a couple of questions. In terms of follow-up, I guess towards the deputy mayor, just with regards to our signage. We had a request to look at the signage for the Confederation Center, and it was indicated that we would be looking at it at our next planning and heritage meeting. But we talked about the digitized signing, but we didn't get to the ConFED Center. Just hope we can get that on the next meeting, if that's okay. And the other question I have is for the Ten Prince Street. We received a legal opinion on that in terms of where we are with regards to that designation.
Counselor Beck, can I ask, is that November 14th, 24th, 25th? What, just, I just need the dates?
Page 28, sorry.
Date-wise?
Date-wise, that would be...
Was it the regular monthly meeting, or was it the special meeting? 24th, 25th, 27th? Just for the record.
For the record, it's from the 27th.
Yep. Deputy?
Thank you, Counselor Beck. So in terms of the Ten Prince Street, I don't believe that that legal opinion has come back to our committee yet, and I suspect it will be there for our next Heritage Committee or Board meeting. And in terms of the Confederation Center signage, that is on the agenda for the next item. But I also believe that CAO Muhammad had also been working with the Confederation Center on that, and she may be able to speak to that as well without putting her on the spot. And if there's anything in addition to that, that the managers of Planning and Heritage wanted to add, but I think we pretty well covered it. Thank you.
CAO Muhammad, do you want to just...
(inaudible).
Okay. Donna Miller-Aitken from Planning, Manager of Policy and Heritage?
Thank you, worship. So at the last Planning and Heritage Committee meeting, I mentioned that we are about to meet with Steve Bellamy, the person who made the request, and we have a meeting set for Thursday to discuss this matter.
Counselor Beck? Good.
Good for sure.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Thank you for that, sir. So we have to motion, I need a motion to move into a closed session. The reason for the closed session is that David Hooley, our lawyer, is, legal counsel is online. Melanie is also here, so they wanted to do it at the first of the meeting. And it's a motion to, I can just see it here, move into a closed session as per section 119, one subsection E and F. E is a matter still under consideration on which the council has not yet publicly announced a decision, and which discussion in public would likely prejudice a municipality's ability to carry out its negotiations. Subsection F, the conduct of existing or anticipated legal proceedings or the review of legal advice. And it's all pertinent to or related to short-term rental licensing bylaw implementation, and I believe Counselors Beck and Counselor Twill are in conflict, so they will have to leave the meeting. Sorry about that, guys, but just get yourself comfortable out in the foyer, and I believe Donna and David will stay. Others will have to leave.
You'll have to move...
Yes, I know, I know. I'm just waiting for these two to leave. Because they can't vote on it. So I need a motion to move into a closed session. Moved by Counselor McKinnon, second by Deputy Mayor Yankoff. All those in favor? Okay.
I'm in favor.
So Donna?
We can just get a comms check there, can you hear me? Hello?
Yep, we can hear you there, Councilman Turgeon.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. So, we're... Is there anything I have? Okay. So, we can resume? Jessica, are you back in the line?
I am, yes.
Okay. Yeah, no business arising from the closed session, so we will go on to Planning and Heritage. Deputy Mayor Yankoff.
Thank you, your worship. The Planning and Heritage Committee met on December the 5th. Copies of the minutes and reports are included in your package. The Planning Board met on December the 5th. Copies of the Planning Board reports and minutes are also in your package. Public meeting minutes from November 1st are in your package as well. The Heritage Board met on December the 4th. Again, minutes are in your package and the report. Design Review did not meet this past month. The Affordable Housing Advisory Committee met on November 21st, and the copies of the minutes are included in your package. So, tonight, we have five resolutions to be put forward, and we also have a first reading, we have two first readings and one second reading. And if anyone has any questions, I will do my best to answer. Thank you.
Councilwoman Turgeon.
Deputy Mayor, for your report. And, you know, in the news lately, in one of our last meetings, we were looking at a project that the developers seem to have walked away. I'm wondering, is there any way that the city, I know it's unusual, and it's probably, I don't know if we can do it, is to reach out and try to work with this group? We're in dire needs of housing within the city, especially in the city core. And I know our planners have worked with them somewhat, and they're bound by the restrictions that are in the Planning Act. So, this is a huge development, which I believe the city needs in a desperate, desperate situation. And what I'm asking is, if we can get someone to reach out and try to get these people back to the table. I know there's a lot of numbers of money flowing around that they're going to lose or they need. It's just that, I know our planners can only work with what they have. And can we, as a council, change things or help change things? Because you hate to see this walk away. This would be a key development for our city. It would give such needed housing. There's a key to it as affordable housing. I see in different outlooks or news articles that the province has tried to try to help or to look at helping. So, I think, you know, when people get in a situation and they get upset and they leave on a bad note, there's a lot of people that are looking to them to come back. there's a lot of people that are looking to them to come back. And I'm asking, is there any way that the city can reach out and get them back to the table? I know time is of the essence, you know, when you're looking at this type of development and the money involved and what it could bring to our city. So, what I'm asking you, as the Chair of Planning, to reach out or to get staff to reach out, to try to get them back to the table here. And if there's anything we can do for changes or to help, you know, I'd certainly ask council to do it. Because I can't say it enough. The city needs this housing, especially in the downtown core. And I know a few years ago, we looked at a six-level hotel in the city. And at that time, that was a big issue. Oh, we're going six stories, you know. We can't do that. But it's built. It's a viable business. It looks good. And now, when we're faced with something more, to go another story or two, again, we're looking at, well, we can't. But what I'm asking is for us, as a council, or staff, or whoever can help, just to reach out and see if we can get this back on track. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Yankoff.
Yeah, thank you, Councilor Drong. Yeah, you'd mentioned the Planning Act, and I think, you know, this came down to the official plan and our zoning and development bylaw, which is, I think, why it's so urgent that we rewrite this official plan, which will prompt the changes to the zoning and development bylaw. And I think that we could probably all agree that, you know, densification in the downtown and our corridors is definitely a priority, as is housing. The process to which you're asking me the question of... It's hard for us to speak to a project that has not yet come to council. However, I know I understand where you're coming from with that. So, I think I will defer the... Kind of the outcome of your question to our manager of planning to see what are the next steps when these types of situations present themselves. Okay?
David.
Thank you, Chair Yankoff. And through the Chair, to address Councilor Drong's question. Planning staff have been proactive in reaching out to the developer in this case. We have had some discussions about an alternative path forward. That alternative path would see us bringing this proposal back to Planning Board and hopefully on to council at that point through an alternative mode where we would seek amendment to the official plan as it applies to this property. So, that's been offered as a way forward to the developer. They've agreed that that's a legitimate way to try and bring this back to the table and as a way of working with them to seek a resolution on the matter that would potentially be more positive to help enable the development.
Thank you. That's terrific... Oh, sorry. Did you want to... No. That's terrific news, you know. I'm like everybody else. You read it in the paper or on CBC or on Facebook. And it's always like, well, the city's not here to help. But, no, when I can sit here and you can say that, you know, we're willing to work, we're actually trying to get them back to the table, that's so great on your staff, reaching out on that. And I really appreciate it. So does a lot of people. I've been getting a lot of calls on this. So, you know, I'm very thankful, and I'll certainly go back and tell them that we are reaching out. We are trying to get it back on track. So, again, thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you, Councilor Drong.
A question for Deputy Mayor Yankoff.
Councilor Twill, first, we'll get to you right after.
Thank you. Last month, I raised the issue of the provincial government, and in particular, the premier and cabinet hosting a meeting at Burtwood Junior High School. Haven't heard anything back. So, I want to reiterate once again, I believe that, you know, since this is their project, this is their program, that they're trying to relocate from Use Street down to Park Street and Beach Street. I think it's incumbent upon the premier to host a meeting at Burtwood Junior High School. It's great to say we're requesting a temporary variance from the city of Charlestown. And that seems to be the, you know, the outdated, archaic strategy, for the lack of a better description. So, I'm going to reinforce my request publicly to the premier and to the cabinet ministers and anyone else he chooses deems fit to have there. I think it's imperative, because I talked to a lot of people throughout the city of Charlestown, particularly the people in that part of the city, you know, the new terminology, the neighborhood of influence or community of influence, or the people that are going to be negatively impacted effect by this relocation of the Outreach Center to Park and Beach. So, I'm hoping the premier takes me up on my offer. I think it's only fair that the residents, the people that live in this community that's been affected by these particular developments by the provincial government, have the respect, the common decency, to meet with the community and to answer their questions directly. I mean, you can't say that we're all in favor of collaboration, and we want collaboration, and we want to consult with residents, when I don't see any evidence of that. There's no evidence whatsoever. And as I said publicly, and I'll say it again, hiding behind city council is getting old. Let's show some leadership. Let's have a meeting at Burtwood Junior High School. We'll help get the constituents there from that entire community and answer the questions. There's many, many questions that need to be answered. And I'll just reinforce that one more time.
Thank you there, Councilor Twill. Councilor McLeir.
Thank you to Mayor Worship. Just like to dovetail onto Councilor Drong's comments on the Polyclinic project. You know, it was disappointing this week to see how it kind of played out to where it's at currently. But I'd, you know, I certainly feel personally, this is a sort of development that downtown needs. You know, 158 units, I believe, was proposed, 32 of them affordable. I think, you know, anything we can do... And I understand from a planning perspective, I've been in this role very long, but I realize through the lens of planning, they're bound by the Planning Act, which is, you know, a legal document and bylaws and what have you. But, and I realize, I guess, in this particular case, where it stood, the investor kind of has taken a different course in the short term here. But I was looking very forward that this might get to council, because I think council could have looked at it through a different lens. You know, we've probably got legislation that's not current with our housing crisis. And had it got to council... You know, I can't speak for council, obviously, but it would have been good for it to get to council, to have discussion and potentially, you know, potentially a vote. But, you know, but going forward, you know, there's more of these things that are going to be coming before council. And I think it's incumbent between us as a council, you know, our CAO, our planning department, to work with our developers, to create partnerships with them. And that, you know, the relationship becomes, instead of being adversarial, I mean, played out in the media and been on the front page of The Guardian, that it's a partnership. And, you know, I'd love very much for the process to get there. I'm sure there's things we can improve on. I know there's been staffing issues with planning, and that's been addressed. It's probably not exactly where they want it. But, you know, going forward, I, you know, I think there's going to be good things happening in the city. But, you know, we all have to do our part. And I'd certainly be very much to be... I'd like to be a part of a council that's working with... Developing great partnerships with developers, because the city needs it. Thank you.
Councilor Matar.
Thank you, Mayor Brown. To the Deputy Yankoff, two things. One, as I continue to work through the... More to regarding the variance for the relocation of the Outreach Center, I do receive quite a bit of requests from people wanting to have a public consultation by the African, in this case, the provincial government. You know, people feel that they are not... Their voices are not being heard and that they are not getting an opportunity to express their concerns and reservations around having the relocation. So, you know, I've also reached out and asked for the same meeting to occur. Unfortunately, you know, we're not there with that. But I, too, reinforce and request having that public consultation with the community members of that area. So, I'll just strengthen what Councilor Twill has also put forward. My second comment is to the Chair of Planning. On September 25th, the council approved the variation for 15 Park Street regarding the temporary shelter. That temporary variance in year one is set to expire on Saturday, December 16th. Under the terms... Six terms and conditions. I would like to have a public acknowledgement of where we are with the six terms and conditions as we approach Saturday.
Deputy?
Thank you, Councilor Matar, for your question. I know we received an email this afternoon from our manager of planning with an update. And you're correct, back in September, council did approve a variance application, an extension, to continue the housing shelters at Park Street. And there were six conditions that went with it. And it was council's understanding that those six conditions would need to be met before a permit would be issued. So, maybe our manager, David, could give a public update on that. And more to the follow-up with Councilor Matar is council voted yes to this variance for one year, based on six conditions. And I think a question was asked at the time, what happens if the conditions are not met? And the answer we were given at the time was, then a permit would not be issued. So, if we can just speak to that as well, on how we go forward if these conditions aren't met by the end of the week. Thank you.
David.
Thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Yankoff. And through the Chair, again, this is reiterating from the email that was sent earlier today to council as an update regarding those six conditions. I'll just run through the conditions very quickly. I'm not going to repeat them word for word and where we currently sit, as that was provided in the email to council earlier. But just to go over, first condition regarded addition of additional officers to patrol the area of influence near the site. We currently have confirmation that a draft agreement between the province and Charlestown Police Services has been reviewed, and that is pending sign-off by all parties to secure a legal agreement with funding from the province for the provision of those additional officers. The second condition regarded provincial funding regarding garbage, daily garbage cleanup and safe disposal within the area of influence associated with the site. It's our understanding at this point that the province has selected a vendor to provide these services for cleanup activities surrounding the site. The third condition concerned installation of a fire... New fire sprinkler system. Our fire department has confirmed that this sprinkler system has been physically installed, however, it is pending testing and commissioning, which will happen this week. The fourth and fifth conditions are intertwined together. They both relate to some physical changes to the site. So, condition four was regarding relocation of the main entrance for the facility. And this was to be to the satisfaction of the manager of City Public Works. And condition number five concerned design, funding and construction to the satisfaction of the city's manager of public works. New public sidewalk, as well as lighting, as well as fencing to restrict access between the subject property and the nearby neighborhoods. Our understanding is that the main entrance and fencing work will be completed this week. There were physical locates done for some of the new fencing on the site. And that the public works manager has confirmed for the province, with the province, that it is to his satisfaction that the new sidewalk and new permanent lighting will actually be installed in the spring or summer of 2024. So, he has that in writing from the province at the current time. However, there will be some temporary lighting installed on the site to provide additional safety and illumination during nighttime hours. Now, to address the second part of the question regarding what if these conditions aren't met by this Saturday, which would mark the one-year anniversary of the original one-year variance, which granted the ability for the use to be located on the site. At that point in time, if the city is deemed operationally that these conditions have not been satisfied, it does put us in a legal position to pursue enforcement for an illegal use at that point. So, I just want to be clear that while the variance... The first variance was approved earlier in 2022. Occupancy was not granted until December 16th, 2022. And that is... That occupancy date, when the use was legally permitted to house people, is the point in time that we based that one-year expiration on for the original variance. Just for clarification.
Okay. Councilor Matar.
Thank you to the Chair and to David. You know, certainly, you know, that's positive news to hear that progress is being made. And, you know, we are only four, five days away, and there still seems to be a lot of work to be yet implemented down there. So, I'm really hopeful by the end of the week that that does occur, you know, and we'll kind of see where we go from there. But I do appreciate the updates, and I'm hopeful that this will be implemented by Saturday. Thank you.
Councilor Twill.
Thank you. Also, reverting back to September 23rd, when council supported the extension of the temporary variance. One of the prerequisites of that particular extension was item one. The province provides the city of Charlestown Police Services with the funding to the satisfaction of the city of Charlestown Chief of Police under a Safe Spaces Agreement for four additional police officers to service the area of influence, which represents a 20-minute walking radius around the boundary of the subject property for a period of one year from the day to the building. Now, last month, when I raised and asked the question, was a memorandum of understanding signed with the province of Prince Edward Island regarding the four additional officers. Four police officers, we were told, no, it's actually two. Well, it's actually four. It's in this document. It's in this resolution, which council passed. And, no, that's for four... That's for four police officers. And there's not a wide variance there to interpret it otherwise. It's quite simple. The two officers are supposed to dedicate to the Outreach Center. Well, I guess they're there. I mean, police are there all the time. Might as well set up shop there. Nothing's changed. Nothing has changed on Use and Street. The police are there. EMS is there. It's... Might as well set up a substation there for all intents and purposes. But to get back to the four police officers, I'm not going to compromise on this. The province made a commitment for four police officers, and they should fulfill their commitment. Not two, not 22, not one, but four. So, Deputy Mayor, I'm not so sure where you at, or, you know, or where the department is or who the onus and responsibility is to ensure that the provincial government maintains their commitment. So, who answers for that in this corporation? I'd like to know, who answers?
So, when the police... When the Chair of Protective Emergency Services gets up, the chief will be at the desk, and that will be answered again. I know we answered last one.
Mr. Mayor, it's in the resolution, sir, that was passed by planning. I know the chief plays a critical role. But that was a commitment that was illustrated right in the resolution. Right? And we haven't seen any evidence of that.
And it's implemented by police services, so that's when we'll leave it.
So, can they get an answer?
Yeah, when police services makes a report.
No, 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 I'm sorry, Mr. Mayor. It's a planning issue. This was in the resolution that was passed in planning under the planning report moved by John McLeir... Councilor John McLeir, seconded by Councilor Norman Beck, planning. It was an eight-two vote. It was an eight-two vote. Councillors Twill and Dron opposed. But this was in the res, this was a planning issue. This was one of the prerequisites.
Yeah.
And it wasn't fulfilled. And I want to know why.
Yeah, but to implement it, it falls through police services. That's my understanding.
I disagree with you, sir. I'm sorry.
Well, that's, we'll have to wait.
I disagree. No, no.
Do you want to?
Can't get an answer.
Go ahead.
Thanks, councillor Twill. So I'm looking at condition number one. And to councillor Twill's defense, it is very clear that the province provides City of Charlottetown Police Services with funding to the satisfaction of the City of Charlottetown Chief of Police under safe spaces agreement for six police officers, including four for the temporary shelter. So I wouldn't mind the answer to that question, too. Now, if we need to wait till protective services for clarification, that's great. But I, I do think that we do need the answer to that question.
And that will come up under police, no, no, that'll come up under police services. Because we got a large agenda here tonight and lots of resolutions.
Do you want to worship?
Nope. We'll get to you.
Okay.
Yep. Anything else there, deputy? Okay. Again, councillor Macleair, councillor Dron and others, the development down there at 199 Grafton, we've reiterated our support for it. And I know David and Donna and our CAO are working with developers. My understanding that they've already met. So there is, there will be a path forward, and sooner, hopefully sooner than later. So first one is planning and.
Thank you, your worship. Moved by Deputy Mayor Yankoff, seconded by councillor McCabe. Be it resolved that the planning and heritage staff will consult with the Federation of PEI municipalities to incorporate language to support the development of parklands, protected areas and urban forestry strategies in the updated official plan.
Councillor Twill?
Thank you.
Tracy, can you please put that back up?
I'm, I'm very interested in this resolution, particularly when it refers to parklands and protected areas, but specifically parklands. How contemporary is the wording in this, in this resolution? Is it status quo from a, from, from, from a city perspective? Or are we carving out new territory in terms of enriching, protecting and enhancing parklands here in the City of Charlottetown, which is extremely important to any neighborhood and any community? Because it, it's all part and parcel of that quality of life. People love green space. They love parks that are in close proximity to their neighborhoods and communities. And what I want to know is how proactive are we with respect to this resolution that's going to be forwarded on to the Prince Edward Island Federation of Municipalities?
Deputy?
Thank you, councillor Twill. I think I'll defer to our planning managers for this one. Although I would say that, you know, as we embark on the rewriting of the official plan, I think it should be a priority that we do, you know, have it very clear in our, in our official plan. But we'll just see what, what our managers have to say on that. See if that's a satisfaction.
Donna and David, and I know, did Janice Harper work on this issue also? So if, Janice, do you want to get to the table? I know that's your background. Your background report's in there, too. Okay. Donna, thank you.
Thank you, your worship. So through you to councillor Twill. As we embark on the rewrite or the update of the official plan, there are a number of issues that we ought to be taking into consideration. And as we are grappling with the changes in global environmental aspects, it is very important that we consider parklands and forested areas as a priority in terms of what we do strategy-wise with the official plan. However, I will pass on to Janice, who will give a more in-depth overview as to the kind of support that they would be requiring from us.
Janice Harper?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Chair. And through the Chair to councillor Twill. The City of Charlottetown has dedicated staff to address environmental sustainability. And, you know, it's really ahead of, ahead of a lot of other municipalities because it has dedicated staff and resources behind those staff, behind those staff. But in working on this project, which is actually sponsored by the Federation of PEI Municipalities, I did a cursory look at the draft official plan and noted that the draft plan actually has less strong language and less clear language with regards to parkland dedication than the current official plan. And I think what may be happening is that in the focus on densification and housing and all of the issues that council is concerned with, there's a possibility that dedication of parkland, especially parkland for natural air protection or open space or habitat, may be forgotten. So by this resolution coming forward, or by this resolution going forward and being approved, it would just be a placeholder that the staff that the city has would have a more formal role when the official plan and bylaws come, come up for renewal.
Councillor Bernard?
Thank you, your worship. I'm just wondering, I, I have the same concerns. And I'm just wondering, because right now, I believe parks and rec staff do have the ability to, whatever land is being offered in a subdivision, they have the right to take what's being offered or say no. My concern in the official draft, I don't see a minimum. So if somebody could explain to me, at least in the old draft, we had a 10% minimum of the subdivision being divided. I don't see that in the, in the draft official plan. So I'm wondering, other than it says, instead of one lot after subdivision, it's going to be six lots after subdivision. But I don't see any minimum amount of land. And I think we were looking at different conversations in the past about increasing that 10%. So could somebody, can somebody let me know what that amount of land would be in the new draft?
Deputy, do you want to? Janice, do you have some?
I think you may be referring to the difference between the official plan and the bylaw, because the bylaw would, would state, again, I haven't looked at it in a while, but up to 10% of the land to be subdivided can be taken as parkland. And that has not been changed. What we're looking at here is the official plan policy, which is just a more general policy. And so, you know, we're not, we're not diving into details yet. As part of this project, if the city participates, Federation of Municipalities, because this project is federally funded, because we're being supported by fish and wildlife, forest fish and wildlife at the province, we would have resources that would help park staff, together with environmental sustainability staff, make a more informed decision. So let's say there was a habitat for a certain bird, or there was a known habitat in Victoria Park or on one of the trails, then those maps could be brought forward at the point of subdivision, and council would make a more informed decision. So we're not down into the details yet. We're just at a high level. But we're, as part of this project, we're offering resources to, to, to staff and to council when decisions are made about taking parkland.
Okay. Because it looks, it looks like that we're talking about 48.9.1 in the bylaw. This is a drift, a draft official plan to replace it.
No, we're not looking at a draft official plan right now. We're just looking at, so this is the current bylaw, which is 48.9.1. But then in, in the draft, further down, you'll see the statement about the draft official plan document. And the language in the draft official plan document is weaker. And, and that was why I put that in, or suggested that that go in the report. Because with the focus on densification and housing, it appeared that maybe there might be a move away from taking parkland or taking full parkland. And all this, this is just a participation project. There's no required outcome. It's just an offer through a project that's funded federally and that's administered by the Federation of PEI Municipalities to give staff more resources when they're reviewing land that is going to be subdivided and when they're reviewing parkland dedication. So it's not really about the amount of parkland dedication. It's about the features of, of the land. And that there, there could be maybe more information brought forward at that point in time.
Yeah. Councillor Dron, okay, go ahead.
Thank you. And thank you for that explanation. I, I know, you know, with all these developments going on here, and it's an automatic 10%, the land has to be parkland. I mean, when you sit here and you look at that issue, especially in the City of Charlottetown, I, I didn't know when I first started that we have over 110 parks in the city. And you got to get staff to put in playgrounds, cut the grass, maintain it. So, you know, if, if every development or new development comes online, and you have to give 10% of that for a park, you know, I don't think, you know, the way you explained it, I, I believe that that's something that we, we or, or the city can look at to take the, the pressure off housing. Because if, if all we do is say, okay, you're going to have to give a big 10% of that, that land for a park, it certainly cuts down on the housing. So, I mean, I know you're well aware of it. I just wanted to, to say a quick support for that. So thank you very much for your explanation.
Councillor, councillor Twill?
I, I, I think councillor Dron, we, we got to be careful. Because, you know, if you go back in time, a lot of development has been approved, major development, where young families are living in these particular developments. They have no access to playgrounds, no access to green space. And I think it's very, very important. I think one of the, one of the positive attributes of this city is our parks, like you mentioned, our green space. And there's no price tag that you can put on that. It's, it's so important, just like, you know, our, our sports fields and rails and trails. And, and that's what people are striving for, and that's what they want to see. I think these are indispensable prerequisites when it comes to zoning and development bylaw and, and the official plan. And, you know, I'm glad we're having this discussion here tonight, because I'm definitely going to be talking at our Parks and Recreation Committee with our manager. We want to be in on the ground floor. We want to make sure that, that, you know, we're, we're continuing on with the growth and development of our, our green space and our parks, Parks and Recreation, playgrounds and other amenities that people look forward to in their own respective community. I can't emphasize that enough, because when you don't have that, then, then there's no real incentive for young families to move in. There's no incentive for young families to move into a neighborhood if those amenities are not there. That affects your schools, that affects, you know, your, 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 your neighborhoods, and whether or not they're revitalized, revitalized with young families moving in. So I think we need to have more discussions. If this resolution here kind of sounds the alarm, and I think, I think is what you're striving for here, Janice, and that's fine. But, you know, we, we've got to, we've got to really be careful as how this thing plays out.
Thank you, councillor Twill. Okay. Question?
Question called.
Questions called. All those in favor? Councillor Matard?
Yes.
Okay. Want to read the next one there?
Thank you, your worship. Planning and Heritage Resolution Number Two, moved by Deputy Mayor Yankoff, seconded by councillor McCabe. Be it resolved that council rejects the request to amend section 47.3 of the City of Charlottetown Zoning and Development Bylaw, PH-ZD2, to allow the erection of digitized signs on public rights of ways.
Okay. Okay. Councillor Twill, do you want to, do you want to go up, councillor Beck? No? Councillor Twill?
Yeah, thank you. At the Economic Development Committee level, we had, I thought was good discussion, a good understanding as to the importance of digital signage and, and being able to communicate with our residents, regardless of whether you live in West Royalty, East Royalty, Hillsport Park, Winslow, the older parts of the city, the main entranceways into the city. And digital signage, to my mind, is a lot better than the four-by-eight signs that are put up, which, which are really archaic and outdated. A lot of the major cities have digital signage. All you have to do is go down to the Confederation Center.
Right at the roof.
Pardon me?
Right, right at the roof. It's on the roof for the ticket office.
Thank you for the confirmation.
Thank you very much.
Anyway, getting back to my preamble, I, I think, I think to turn, and to turn this down would be a mistake. We did ask staff to look at jurisdictional scan. No, maybe, maybe, maybe the planning act needs to be changed once again. Maybe we need to make changes in the official plan and zoning development bylaw. But just to shut this down and say no to digital signage, I think digital signage in its appropriate place is important for our city and gets that message out to major events that are taking place.
Okay. Do you want to, Mr. Beck? I know there's a digital sign going over to Stratford, which is very well.
Yes.
Works very well. So?
Questions?
Question? Okay, good. Deputy?
Thank you. There was quite a bit of discussion at the committee level on this with his worship and, and I believe it was just he and councillor McCabe that were there for the meeting when we discussed this.
Councillor Beck.
Councillor Beck, my apologies. So staff is, staff is looking for us to not proceed with digital signage. Councillor Twill has brought up the fact that it is, you know, it is a path moving forward in the, in 2023. And I'm just wondering, like, is this something we want to defer back to the committee or to the staff for a little bit more information before we're hastily, say, accepting staff's recommendation? I'm just wondering if we want to send this back to staff? Just wanting, okay?
Okay, just one second. So deferred, moved by the deputy, seconded by councillor McKennan. Do you wish to speak to it, councillor McKennan?
No, just, just second it.
Okay, councillor Beck.
So.
Just to get up there, please.
Yeah. So if I understood this history, it started in economic development, got kicked over to planning to be explored. It got explored by planning. It got consulted with police and emergency services, who provided, who did the jurisdictional scan and did the legwork to research what's happening and whether it's a good idea or a bad idea. And I think when they looked at it in its entirety, when we looked at it, it was predominantly a safety concern, which was, which was highlighted. And so I don't, I don't see really a reason to defer. I don't know what else a deferral or what, what more information we're going to be gathering from it. They, there are other areas that shows what happens. They did give other examples about big cities like Dundas Square in, in Toronto, another city, I think in Calgary or something where they do it. But it's done more in commercial, commercial areas. But I don't know, I don't think a deferral is, is the way to go. I think we've, the, the information has been researched, it's there. I would not vote for a deferral. I think we vote in the original motion, and go ahead. So I wouldn't be supportive of a deferral.
Councillor Bernard, councillor Macleair?
Yeah. And we're just talking here about the, the public right of ways.
That's right.
It's just what we're talking about, right?
Correct.
So, I mean, digital signs can still go up on commercial property and so on. This is, this is public right of ways we're talking about.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you.
Councillor Macleair, I know you had your hand up. And then councillor Twill?
Yeah, no, I'd like to, I'm in favor of supporting the deferral. I just think there's, there's more to be, more to be understood, more to be explored on the whole thing of digitized signs, you know, throughout the city. And if that means going back to, to our police and our public works and wherever else it has to go, I'd just, I'd, I'd be, I'd be in support of a deeper look at this. Thank you.
Councillor Twill?
Yes, I'll, I'll support the deferral as well. I mean, even though the city itself has digital signage on, on, on the city's right of way, we're, we're talking- talking about messaging that we want to get out to the constituents here throughout the city of Charlottetown regardless of what neighborhood or what ward you live in. And, you know, we see time to time, for example, Public Works will take out those signage and put them on the city's right of way to say, well, for example, Towers Road is closed today because of construction, or it could be another street or whatever. And I think it's, it's much more advantageous to have signage, you know, of this contemporary nature. If it's used properly, I think can be a big advantage for, for our, for our communities. So I'll certainly be, we need more discussion, obviously. Maybe we need to have a joint meeting with Economic Development and...
Or committee.
Or committee. Just committee at all.
Yeah.
We need more information.
Bring, bring them all in, please.
Yeah.
Planning, economic development.
Question, Counselor Ramsey?
Sure.
Questions called.
Questions.
Okay, all those in favor of the deferral, please raise your hand. Okay, and all those against the deferral.
I'm in favor of the deferral.
So deferral is seven to three.
Your Worship.
Yes? Did you want to give a comment there?
Yeah, a question. That could.
Go ahead.
Thank you, Your Worship. I'd like to ask if you could just be more specific in instruction to the Planning and Heritage Department in terms of the information that you're looking for to make the decision. Are you looking for more comparables? What are you looking for so they know to bring that back to the committee so you have the information you need to make the decision on the recommendation? Thank you.
Deputy, do you want to answer that?
I think the more information that I'm looking for is what would it take for this to be something that is safe and, and could, could be there instead of those wheelie signs that we bring out periodically? So I'm more curious of how can we turn this around to a positive experience with these digital, this digital signage versus something that's not safe? Like what can we do as a city so that we can be here next month saying that I think digital signs can be safe if we do this, this, and this? That's kind of what I was looking for.
Yeah, and we'll do a group session, we'll do a group session with the whole council. Okay, got the next resolution? Oh, Counselor Bernard, do you want to say something lastly?
Well, I think, I think she said, I mean, my concern was, you know, if we say no to the digitalized sign, what about our construction ones where we have, we're using digitized signs now? So I've decided to eliminate that. So I do think there's some more discussion that can be had.
And we'll just bring it to the whole council rather than committee, committee, committee. Committee at the whole. Okay? Number three.
Thank you, Your Worship. Moved by Deputy Mayor Yankoff, seconded by Counselor McCabe. Be it resolved that council approves the request to amend Appendix A, the future land use map of the City of Charlottetown official plan, from industrial to medium density residential for 68 Royalty Road, PID 145714, and amend Appendix G, zoning map of the City of Charlottetown Zoning and Development Bylaw, from light industrial zone M1 to medium density residential zone R3 for the property located at 68 Royalty Road, PID 145714.
Thank you, Deputy. Counselor McKinnon, Counselor Dron, and Counselor Ramsey.
Thank you, Your Worship. As we all know, I guess the city with our population growth, we are in a housing crisis. The building of apartment buildings and building up and increasing the density of the housing, it's a must as the city outgrows the available lands and buildings that we have. Several residents of Ward Eight have reached out to me, many have submitted letters of opposition, a couple in support of this proposal of the land use change. The residents have spoken strongly about the increased traffic that this will occur on Royalty Road and Alderwood Road, not being safe to walk along without any sidewalks. Speed is not monitored on these roads now, it's a major issue. Many complaints of near misses on Royalty Road over the last year alone. There's no lighting on Alderwood, it's a major concern, it's a very dark roadway. Increased driveways along here could be a safety risk, so I just stand to oppose the changes for the zoning of the property.
Okay. Counselor Dron.
Thank you, Mayor Brown. And, you know, I, I look at this development and like Counselor McKinnon said, we're in a housing crisis here. I think the developer went way above his due diligence. He's worked with fire, he's worked with planning. He went out and designed this parcel of property to suit what the planners and the, and the fires and the police wanted. You know, the apartment buildings are stepped back, he put townhouses on, on the road to make it aesthetically pleasing. It's, it's a, it's a company there, I think they're going to do great work. We are in a major housing crisis. When, when these developments come forward, you know, I know what it's like to, to go to the bank, try to get money to put a development in, and this is a major undertaking for a company, you know, and he's willing, or their company is willing to provide housing, safe housing. I mean, they, they changed the parking, they, the outlook of it, you know, the townhouses, that's going to invite families in there, there's going to be new apartment buildings so seniors can go there as well to stay in the community. You know, with every, with every new development, there comes issues of, of lighting or stop signs or speed. Well, that's something the city, as, as we develop, you know, we can ask our, our services to provide, you know, whether it needs a, a new stop sign, whether it needs a speed bump or a new sidewalk. That all comes hand in hand with developing a new development, so I'm certainly going to support it. You know, I, I know we're in a housing crisis here, you know, we have to do whatever we can to get people in beds. Thank you.
Counselor Ramsey, Counselor Twill.
Thank you, Your Worship, for that. And the, what we heard at the public meeting last week is that sidewalks and infrastructure and everything should be done and looked after, as Counselor Dron says, and I know working with our public works, I, I hope they're going to be working with our public works and have that a little more safer by having sidewalks installed and more, and better lighting, things along that line. So I just want to put those comments out there that we were listening to in the public. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Counselor Twill.
I, I understand the concern of the residents. I'm, I'm optimistic that their message has been heard loud and clear with respect to some of the deficiencies and disparities when it comes to infrastructure. I understand discussions have taken place with public works, with police, with fire. I know some changes have been made in terms of the conceptual design. I'm optimistic that the developer will work with public works to put in the necessary infrastructure to alleviate those concerns. I think one of the things that really hits home to me is the light industrial zone. And Caldwell Parker, what's it called, well, Dela Parker was here. She made it quite clear that if this project doesn't go ahead from a residential perspective, that there's an applicant waiting in the wings to continue on with light industrial. Light industrial means heavy truck traffic in the community, and I know the residents with small children would not want that. That hits home to me because of Mount Everett Road, we are faced with industrial traffic, heavy truck traffic, you know, 24/7. And that's why, you know, I've been talking about a safe, multipurpose pathway on the west side of Mount Everett Road. So I can understand the dilemma that, you know, when it comes to making a decision of this magnitude, because if, if we say no to the development, then as of right, you know, an applicant walks in for light industrial, walks into the planning department, fills out the application, there's your permit, then there's all kinds of truck traffic, and I know in my heart and soul that the residents would not want that. So I'm hoping, you know, the counselor with his, with his efforts, I'll, I'll work with him as well, try to, try to address those deficiencies for the residents, and let's, let's not have any heavy truck traffic or heavy vehicle traffic in that community. Thank you.
Counselor Beck.
Yeah, I, I just want to echo what Counselor Dron said, I had a lot of similar thoughts. One of, one of the areas, I know there's always, when we're looking at development, there's always imperfections, if you will. I think one of the things that would, that did come about was the lighting issue. I do know that the developer, through the installation of the building, that will bring some lighting that will come with the building itself just because of the development that they are doing. So I don't see any of the areas of concern, a lot of these areas of concern as being insurmountable, and I too will be supporting the, the motion to go ahead with the development. Thank you.
Okay. Counselor Bernard.
Thank you, Your Worship, and a lot, a lot of this was, it's already been said. I, I think having a zone light industrial, having that near a community, I think this is a better zoning for the residential area, better zoning for the people that live there. I also think that, and I think Counselor Dron alluded to it, where with density comes improvements. So the street lights will go up, sidewalks will go in, that does come with density. So I will be supporting it. I think it's a, it's a great project and it does go towards our, our stock for housing. So, thank you.
Okay. Counselor, Counselor Burtard, I know we can't see you, but any comments?
No, I would just second a lot of what was said. I, you know, I certainly think a lot of these concerns can be mitigated through additional measures, working with public works, policing, et cetera. So I'm fully, you know, supportive of new development, and I think it's good for the area as opposed to the alternative what could be put there otherwise. So I will be supporting it. Thank you.
Question? Questions called. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Counselor Burtard, yea or nay?
Yea.
All those against? Nine, one. Can you read the next one?
Thank you, Your Worship. Moved by Deputy Mary Yankoff, seconded by Counselor McCabe. Be it resolved that the request to proceed to public consultation to amend the Development Concept Plan and Development Agreement pertaining to Lot 2019-3, 20, 20th, 20th Street of, oh, St. Martha's, this is it? I am so sorry, my poor brain.
That is St. Martha. One of the saints.
20 St. Martha's Court be approved.
Questions called, all those in favor to go. Okay. Counselor Burtard?
Yea.
Okay. And yes to 20 St. Martha's Court. Okay. Next one.
Hopefully I'll do better here. Moved by Deputy Mary Yankoff, seconded by Counselor McCabe. Be it resolved that the request to amend the current Development Concept Plan and Development Agreement for the property located at 115 Deacon Grove Lane and Murchison Lane, PIDs 425892 and 691162, and amend Appendix B, Comprehensive Development Area Parcels and Permitted Uses of the Zoning and Development Bylaw in relation to 115 Deacon Grove Lane and Murchison Lane, PIDs 425892 and 691162 be approved.
Questions called by Counselor McCabe. All those in favor? Counselor Burtard?
Yea.
Yea. Okay, 10-0. Is that your report or is, no, no, there's readings. Okay, let's go with the readings.
To adopt official plan amendment, PH-OPA-1038, that the land use for the property at 68 Royalty Road, PID 145714, as shown on Appendix A, future land use map of the City of Charlottetown official plan, is designated as medium density residential zone R3, hereby excluding it from its former designation of light industrial zone M1. Zoning and Development Bylaw, to adopt bylaw, PH-ZD2-074, a bylaw to amend the zoning and development bylaw to rezone the subject property located at 68 Royalty Road, PID 145714, from light industrial zone M1 to medium density residential zone R3. Be it resolved that the bylaw to amend the City of Charlottetown Zoning and Development Bylaw... I should have done the first one. I'm just off tonight, sorry.
No. We'll be clarified the MGA to maybe simplify it.
Let's do the official plan first, and then I'll go to the zoning bylaw. My apologies.
Go ahead.
Be it resolved that the official plan amendment, PH-OPA-1-38, as it pertains to 68 Royalty Road, PID 145714, as attached, be adopted, moved by Deputy Mayor Yankoff and seconded by Counselor McCabe.
Shall I carry? Contrary? Okay, nine, one.
Okay. Be it resolved that the bylaw to amend the City of Charlottetown Zoning and Development Bylaw, PH-ZD2-074, as it pertains to 68 Royalty Road, PID 145714, as attached, be read a first time and approved, and that it be read a second time at the next public meeting of council, moved by Deputy Mary Yankoff, seconded by Counselor McCabe.
Shall I carry? Contrary? Nine, one.
Carry.
Okay, do you want to go to the next one?
Zoning and Development Bylaw, to adopt bylaw, PH-ZD2-075, a bylaw to amend the zoning and development bylaw, to amend the current Development Concept Plan and Development Agreement for the property located at 115 Deacon Grove Lane and Murchison Lane, PIDs 425892 and 691162, and to amend Appendix B, Comprehensive Development Area Parcels and Permitted Uses of the Zoning and Development Bylaw in relation to the subject properties. Be it resolved that the bylaw to amend the City of Charlottetown Zoning and Development Bylaw, PH-ZT-ZD2-075, as it pertains to 115 Deacon Grove Lane and Murchison Lane, PIDs 425892 and 691162, as attached, be read a first time and approved, and that it be read a second time at the next public meeting of council, moved by Deputy Mary Yankoff, seconded by Counselor McCabe.
Shall I carry? Okay.
Carry.
Okay, that's it.
There's one more.
Yep. Oh, that's great.
To adopt bylaw, PH-ZD2-073, a bylaw to amend the zoning and development bylaw, to amend Appendix G, zoning map of the zoning and development bylaw for Lot 39 Oak Drive, PID 392936, single detached residential R1L zone to low density residential R2 zone to construct a duplex. Be it resolved that the bylaw to amend the City of Charlottetown Zoning and Development Bylaw, PH-ZD2-073, as it pertains to Lot 39 Oak Drive, PID 392936, as attached, be read a first time and approved, and that it be read a second time at the next public meeting. We already did that.
Yep. Thank you for reading it. Yeah.
I have two stickers that say read on here.
Do you want a drink of water?
I'm so sorry.
Do you want a drink of water?
Okay, I'll keep going. Whereas the bylaw to amend the City of Charlottetown Zoning and Development Bylaw, as it pertains to Lot 39 Oak Drive, PID 392936, as attached. I'm so confused in how this is worded. Let's see. Be it resolved that said bylaw be read a second time and approved, moved by Deputy Mary Yankoff, seconded by Counselor McCabe.
That's great. Okay. Shall I carry?
Then you need to adopt.
Carry.
Okay. And shall we adopt it?
Yeah.
Yes, okay. Thank you, C A O. Okay. 10-0. And is that it, Deputy? That's...
For planning.
Thank you. Okay. So the next report, I believe, is Water and Wastewater, Counselor Dron.
Thank you, Mayor Brown.
Thank you, sir.
There you go.
Counselor Dron, thank you.
Thank you very much. The Water and Sewer Utility Committee met on, let's see, November 20th, and their minutes are in your package. I have one resolution coming tonight, but I, I just have a couple of questions about the minutes from our package. I got a call from, from a lady on Pine Drive, and she, she's been after me now for the last year or so since we started building the Public Works building. And she's concerned with the amount of equipment. And she's concerned with the amount of equipment, you know, a lot of, I don't know if it's garbage or broken equipment, it's been piled up back of her area. And then, I, I went up to get pictures, and I was gonna bring it to her manager's attention there, but, and then I was, I seen this, this big tank that has 4,600 liters of diesel fuel in it. And then, then I went out to Brockley there, on my way out for a drive, and I noticed there was a big, big container of 4,600 liters of diesel at that one. And so, you know, I, I got thinking, well, what are we doing here? Like, you know, in our committee, we meet this week, I, I just wanna know, like, is the water that we have in Mount Edward Road, you know, we have a new tank there, the one in Brockley is older, and then I noticed one by Charlestown Rural, there's a smaller one there, and it's, it's all rusted on the outside. So, I'm looking at putting that on our agenda, and maybe, maybe the, the manager can, can explain, you know, the amount of diesel around our water. And when I was out in Brockley, I noticed that the, the cable, that, you know, I, I was led to believe that the communications were hooked up to our water.
Fiber optics.
Yes. But that was rolled up and just laying there. So, you know, I know you've asked for that, we've asked for enough.
Four years.
Four years. So, I'm, I'm just gonna, you know, rather than going back to committee and then bringing it up again, it's here tonight with our minutes. You know, maybe the manager can explain, first of all, the amount of diesel around our water, second of all, where are we at with the fiber optic cables? Like, 'cause I said, we see them, and they're, and they're piled around these areas, that they're just laying on the ground. And, you know, I, I guess we, we started this project, like the mayor said, four years ago. We were told that it was gonna be completed, and, and we just wanna bring it here tonight. You know, tell us where we're at with it, and then we'll move on. Thank you.
So, Mr. Chair, could I just ask, I, I do wanna ask that I will be serving a notice of motion at the meeting about going to a third party on this fiber op, so that doesn't prevent me from doing that tonight? Like, what you, what the, what the manager's gonna do tonight is give some explanations, explanations, but that doesn't preclude my advancing a notice of motion?
No, definitely not. I know it was in the minutes where you've asked that.
Yeah.
And a third-party review, which, you know, we agreed that had to be done.
Yeah.
You know, so, you know, we're already in the process of that. I, I didn't know you were gonna bring a notice of motion, or.
Just to put it, I just wanna formalize it.
Sure.
Okay. So, do you want Mr. McKeown to speak to you?
Yeah, sure. Let's speak to it and get it cleared up first. Thanks.
So, sorry, was the question that you wanted to speak, or discuss these things at our committee meeting, or you're asking for something now here in council?
No, let's get them here now. Like, we've, we've been after this for the last couple of years. We go back to the committee, give an explanation, and then, you know, like I said, Counselor Twill has been asking things, so it's here now, it's in our minutes, so let's just get the explanation here. For those, those issues that I've asked, you know, an update on our fiber op, when's it gonna be completed? When, when are we at that completion zone? But again, you know, I'm not touching in what you said about a third party, right? So, it's just, you know, I've noticed, you know, to drive around and look at the amount of diesel we have there, and some of them look like they have a, a big concrete barrier around them, the one in Brockley, but then it has a faucet at the bottom, I guess that's to let the water out. But I noticed the one in Mount Edward Road is, is smaller, so if it ever broke, what would happen to the water supply? And then, the question is cleaning up the area. The lady's been after me for a year, year and a half, we've told her numerous times that, you know, we'll get this area cleaned up as soon as the building at, the new building that we built for Water and Sewer and Public Works, we'll get that stuff out of there. But, you know, when I walked around it the other day, I know what she's looking at, she's just looking at a mess. And now, we, we tell other people to clean their properties up, but here we are, you know, I was embarrassed, I really was. I apologized because there was a house there, and there's stuff behind it that's just not acceptable. So, and now, you know, with the warm weather, I don't think we can get in there with trucks and get that stuff cleaned up, but.
Okay.
So, there's probably three questions there. The cleanup, the oil, and what was the last one? Where are we in the fiber op?
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. McKeown?
Thank you, Your Worship. Through to my chair. So, the Mount Edward Road Depot was used in cooperation with Public Works for storage of materials while we were working on the new building, and we will work with them to remove any materials that we can from there. And it is a spot centrally located where they were keeping signs and barricades to expedite distribution of those materials within the city, but we will work with them to work on that cleanup. With respect to diesel at our stations, we have diesel there for our backup generators for Fiona, you'll remember, that we were able to keep water supplied into our city, and it's because of those diesel generators that we are able to operate. And the level of protection that we have, because it is our well field, all those tanks are double-walled tanks with this, with that additional concrete structure outside, so the, and they are alarmed, so there's actually two tanks there, so that if one tank breaches, the other tank contains it, and then there's that third tank, in the unlikely event that something happens, that both of those tanks are broken. And as soon as you lose the vacuum that's kept between the two tanks, there's an alarm that advises us of that loss of vacuum. So, we have triple protection around our well fields because of the risk of diesel in close proximity to a well field. The third, the fiber optic project, yes, a project taking a lot of time, and one that I continue to look at the goalposts and the finish line with that project, the great benefit that will come to the city. We continue to work with the contractor to work towards having it completed.
Okay, there we go now. Yeah, and, and I understand, Mr. McKeown, we've asked it time after time after time again, and, and we get that. You're gonna work with the contractor. We're, we're into this, a four-year contract, and that's why I think the mayor has asked for due diligence, getting a third party to see the actual costs and the benefit of, of what we're gonna get. But, to, to the question that I'm asking, where is the end zone here? When, when, you know, the, the person that was doing it came in two years ago and told us he'd be done in two months? So, as I, as I go around my ward, I see Mount Edward Road is still there, there was a tractor there last week, and then when I go out to Brockley, I, I see the, the zone, or the cables laying on the ground. Like, when, when is the end zone here, or do we have to get somebody in to, to help getting us there? I mean, a, a project of this magnitude that's taking this long, you know, I, I don't, I don't know where we're going with it. So, we, we have to get an end zone time, and, and you keep saying, well, I'll, I'll update you, but when we're updated, it's never an update. So, we're, we're meeting on Thursday, so I ask to get a number, get us a timeline when the person can say we're gonna be completed. Thank you.
Yeah. And again, Mr. Chair, that doesn't supersede my notice of motion. Thank you. Correct?
No, no.
Okay.
No, I'm asking for a specific timeline to, to, to get us where we have to be. It's not touching on your, what you asked in the minutes, right?
Yeah.
It's just that I know council has asked me, they've asked me time and time, and every time we go to a meeting, we want an update or a contract signed, and, and, you know, we're, we're left with no answer, so that's what I'm asking for. Thank you. And we're meeting on Thursday, so today's Monday, it'll be a couple of days to get it organized. Thank you.
Okay, we have a resolution?
Thank you, Your Worship. Moved by Counselor Durand, seconded by Counselor Matar. Be it resolved that the city council authorized the roof repair at the Mall Pack Water Station using existing asphalt material as an interim measure.
Counsel Durand?
Thank you, and I, I wanna stand here and say thank you to senior administration. We were looking at an expenditure of, of close to $300,000 to fix this roof. Senior administration thought, you know, to listen to council. We had asked for an update with the insurance to see if they could help fix the roof, and it came back that, you know, we're gonna fix it at a, at a much greater cost. I know when we sat here, we talked about it time and time again, I think council even voted to defer it back to the committee to look at it once again, but, like I said, this resolution here, it's the proper thing, it's a fiscally responsible thing to do here, is to repair the roof with the insurance money that we're entitled to, and, and get it fixed in a safe manner. It's a storage burn for the city's equipment, for the water and sewer equipment. It doesn't do any, it's not involved in, in taking up water in the well field or anything, it's a storage shed. So, I commend senior administration for, you know, stepping in and seeing this and being fiscally responsible. So, I ask the council to support this, to get that roof fixed. Thank you.
Counsel Twill?
Thank you, Counsel Durand. I understand the rationale. With regards to the building being designated a national historic site, I wonder if, if senior administration or our manager, someone in the city's corporation had the opportunity to explore possible funding? I'm not saying we need to spend more, but was there an opportunity to explore funding possibilities with Heritage Canada? Was there any contact made, you know, with Heritage Canada's to maybe see if they could alleviate?
Mediate the cost, and that's, that's primarily one of the main functions of Heritage Canada, is to help with funding.
Counsel Twill, you hit your button there. Just turn it on again.
I think, I think I.
No, he's all right. Go ahead, keep going. Just repeat what you said there.
Okay. Okay, I'll try, try it again.
Yeah. Well, on the record.
Last council meeting, when the resolution come up, and it was an exorbitant amount of dollars that would cost taxpayers, put in a slate roof, I asked if there's an opportunity for senior administration to explore funding possibilities with Heritage Canada, because the building is designated a national historic site. I thought it'd be prudent to, to explore that, that possibility. At the same time, I understand what you're saying, Counsel Durand, I mean, the exorbitant amount of dollars for this building, but if, if Heritage Canada, you know, was to provide X number of dollars, maybe it, maybe it could be a win-win, not sure. All I asked her was just, did, do we have the opportunity to explore that vehicle, that avenue? 'Cause that's one of the primary roles and responsibilities of Heritage Canada, is to help with the, with the upkeep and the preservation of these historic buildings.
Counsel Durand?
Thank you, Mayor Brown. Thank you, Counsel Twill. Yes, our management did look into it. You know, we got a quick email there that it's not a national historic site. It's not. It's a national historic resource, which it doesn't qualify for funding for that. You know, like I, like I said before, we did, we did ask that question. Administration listened to the questions that we asked, and we followed through with the insurance. So, the insurance is gonna help us out to fix the roof and put it back in the, the stage that it was before. And like I said, a lot of these other buildings that we have around also have asphalt roofs, so that's what we're doing.
Thank you, sir. Counsel Bernard? And then Counsel McCabe? And Counsel Beck?
Thank you, Your Worship. So, that's the first I heard of that. I thought we were told this was a historic site, it was designated as a historic site. 'Cause I thought when we last talked about this, council had agreed to put the slate roof on. They were gonna look into ways of other funding opportunities to pay for that slate roof. And I noticed the, the resolution says the existing asphalt material is an interim measure, so I assume that's because insurance is paying to fix the damages there now. We will proceed with the slate roof. Am I understanding that correctly?
Is that correct, Mr. Chair? Just let me catch you on the mic. Go ahead.
No, thank you. Interim means that we're just gonna, we're gonna fix it and, and get it back to the, the way it was before. We're gonna, I think the, the cost of doing the roof, you know, this is a fix, we'll fix a lot of the asphalt. And then, if it needs to be done, we'll look at it that, that further down the road. I mean, you look at the cost, you know, the, the city is in dire needs of, of, of taxes, money, keep things going, we're looking at police officers. This was a way that senior administration thought, you know what, we'll fix the roof, the insurance company will, will help us out, put it back to the original way it was, get it nice and dry, and interim, you know, you can look at it any way you want. If, if it comes up, maybe in budget time, we could look at it again, but this is to get it fixed in a fiscally responsible way and move forward with it. Thank you.
Sir?
Yep, Your Worship.
Second question? Yeah.
I thought we already passed a resolution to move ahead with this, to the slate roof.
We deferred it.
It was deferred.
We're sending it back to find funding. I thought the decision was made, what we're putting on the roof. Maybe I'm wrong.
Yeah, it was deferred, and then the referral was to, the remedy that senior management came up with, was to repair the roof from Hurricane Fiona. Is that correct, Mr. McKeown?
That is correct. So, when we looked at it, the insurance will cover about $20,000 to put it back as asphalt. It's about 20% of the roof that needs to be done, and originally, the thought was, okay, if we have to do 20% of the roof, what if we do an improvement? But in reviewing it, at this point in time, we should, the recommendation is to repair it with the asphalt, and in the future, when the entire roof needs to be redone, then we can revisit whether we do it as slate. So, repair it now, it's about 20% of it that's damaged, wait until sometime in the future when we're looking at doing a complete roof replacement, and then revisit the slate roof at that time.
Counsel, Counsel McCabe? Thank you, sir. Counsel McCabe?
Thank you. Yeah, I guess I was just making sure, you know, we have a heritage resource bylaw and stuff, and I know that it's expensive for everybody, so if we, if, are we doing this with the idea, but that kind of explains a little more if you're thinking you're going to, I don't know, I, I guess it's expensive for everybody if they have heritage rules that they have to follow, so if, I just don't understand how we don't have to follow the rules because it's expensive if we expect other people to follow the rules when it's expensive. So, I'm struggling with that, I appreciate it, 20%, blah, blah, blah. Is there a difference between a heritage resource site and a heritage site? Or is it just the word "resource"? Just wondering.
Okay. Counsel Durand?
Thank you for the question. Yes, if it was a national historic site, it would be eligible for funding, but the city deemed it a national historic resource, so that, that I don't, I believe it doesn't come with national funding on that stuff. I could be mistaken, but that's what's explained to me. You know, it, it came with the Heritage Department saying, listen, if you're going with a metal-looking roof, then we recommend slate. So, there was nothing discussed, like I say, putting it back to asphalt. This is what, the way it was for the last 15 years, we're not doing anything new, a lot of our buildings have asphalt, so this was if we were changing it. The manager thought with a metal look, to make it look like slate, would be something that we'd look at, but the Heritage Department said no. They wanted a full slate. So, we're not really breaking the rules here, we're not going against their recommendation. If we were gonna tear down the roof and redo it, they recommend to go to slate, but not a repair. Hopefully, that clears it up.
Counsel McCabe, follow-up? Second time? Oh, sorry.
So, just for clarification, through the Heritage Department, they, they're good with us meeting the criteria by repair. Is that, is that correct?
Well, my understanding is Counsel Durand, CAO, senior management, did their due diligence? Can you verify that, sir?
Yes, exactly. That's, that's what we came, we're not, we're not changing anything, we're just repairing it, right? Just like any other building, if, if the Cody Banks had a, a metal come off the roof, we repair it in the same way it is now. We're not going against the heritage review, only if we were gonna take the whole roof off and then go, then we would be looking at what the heritage recommended for us.
Good point. Counsel Beck, and then Counselor McClair.
Yeah, I just, I just wanna reiterate the, the, this is designated as a heritage. We had the discussion at Planning and Heritage, the, the example was a metal sort of roof that looked like slate. There was a lot of debate at the Planning and Heritage Committee, and the collective feeling of the committee at that time was, if we're gonna abide by our heritage bylaws, kind of what Counselor McCabe was saying, if we're gonna be asking people to follow our heritage bylaws, we have to be walking the walk in that ourselves. So, that's kind of where the original discussion came. I understand the importance of securing the heritage site, which it is, temporarily, because that's what was on, I think it was on, it's been on there for what, 25, 20, 25 years or something like that, prior to it, believe, being designated as a, as a heritage site. So, if we're looking at it as an interim basis, I'm supportive, but I do not want to see this as a long-term solution to the building. I want to see us embracing our heritage part, and may cost us a few more dollars, but if we're gonna be adhering to our, our policies, we do have a heritage resource, I believe it's.
I believe it's incumbent upon us to follow our guidelines when it comes to that in preserving those heritage resources in the integral nature that they are meant to be. Thank you.
Counsel Ramsey.
I'd like to ask a question too, Mayor Brown.
Thank you, Your Worship. And I sit on Sore Maturi. This is just, I think the thing we're missing, there was asphalt shingles on this all along. And this is just to replace the 20% that's been blown off? And then, as Counsel Dron said too, in the future, if the whole roof got to be done, then we're looking at the slate program. But, but this is just to replace, we're, we're putting back what was blown off during Fiona, basically, is asphalt shingles. Thank you.
Counsel Bernard.
Uh, thank you. To the chair, I guess Kevin, Kevin, I'm not there and you just read my mind. I think it's important to note that, you know, I think with this kind of started down a path of wanting to replace the full 100% of the roof repair or the, the roof, and then, of course, gets us into a heritage situation. If we're going to go back and just do the roof repair, I think any future work to that roof, meaning, I, I don't imagine we're just going to go rip up all of the shingles for no reason other than they've end of life completely. That's when we go back and look at it from a heritage perspective and budgetary perspective and move forward.
Thank you. Questions called. Okay, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Counsel Bernard.
Yea.
Okay. Okay, that's it, sir. Okay, next report is Public Works. Okay.
So the Public Works Committee met on November 22nd. There's draft minutes included in your package. The Civic Board of Persons actually met on November 21st. I just noticed a mistake in those minutes. These, the minutes that are included in your package were from the meeting October 17th. We're a month behind in our minutes. So we actually met on the 21st of November as well. So we'll have to try and get caught up. You might have two packages. I can tell you that the street resurfacing that everyone's been looking for, the update will be coming to our committee on Wednesday. So after that, it'll get to council for our next, our next meeting. And I want to thank our crew for all the great, great decorations and the way the city looks downtown and all their hard work. Any questions? I'll do my best to answer. Our manager's here as well, and there are seven resolutions to come ahead tonight. Thank you.
Okay. Counsel Twill.
Counsel McCabe. Just, just, I guess, a notice. I'll be bringing up at Public Works recently, I had the opportunity to meet with one of our engineers with residents, senior residents out on Allen Street regarding a safe walkway, whether it be a pathway or sidewalk, preferably an active transportation pathway from Mr. Plummer on the north side to St. Peter's Road. It's something that's been discussed for the last three to four years. Looking forward to working with yourself and the department to ensure that seniors that live on Allen Street, that access Allen Street, a predictable, consistent, safe, safe pathway that they so rightly deserve. And, you know, we talked earlier today, or earlier tonight about, about a development in Counselor Trevor McKinnon's ward, about, about ensuring that infrastructure is in place when these developments are, are constructed. And, and one of the residents, senior resident, in fact, the gentleman was a counselor in this chamber, you know, at the meeting, he said, you know, like, he said, where's planning in this? And, and what happens is we approve development and then we're always seems to be playing, we're always seem to be playing catch-up afterwards, and it's a real struggle to, to have the necessary infrastructure in place. So I guess from a planning perspective, when, when development is approved, we got to look at the infrastructure to ensure that that infrastructure's in place. I hope it serve, serve your constituents well, Trevor, Counsel McKinnon. But I wanted to bring that to your attention. I know you've read some of the emails and look forward to working with our manager. And Riley Twill was there as well, and he conducted himself really well. Thank you.
Okay, thanks, Counsel Twill. Counsel McCabe.
Great. I know that also on Wednesday, we'll be looking at the five-year sidewalk plan and, and the criteria of how that plan again comes, comes to fruition. So there'll be room for discussion with that. And on your point with infrastructure, I know there's a lot of work that's being done right now with, it's cross-sectional in the departments, that they're hoping to eventually get something like that in front of us where they look at, when we approve development, how is it that some of this stuff goes back into the pockets of the developers so that it's not so expensive for the city? And things are getting done in timely fashion rather than us reacting later on knowing of the development. But that's later on down the road to come to us, but we will be having the sidewalk plan on discussion as well on Wednesday.
Counsel Ramsey.
Thank you for that, Counsel McCabe. And I do like the, the look of the city during Christmas again, and I will bring it up for the ninth year, why North River Road. And I know I've been, I've been told we don't own the poles, so we can't even put an angel on there or Santa Claus later is out through the whole city. But that is one of the main streets going in and out of Charlestown. And if there's any way we can do it, just sort of brighten up that area, but just, we'll brighten up that area. How's that now for brighten?
Counsel McCabe.
Thank you.
Make his way at a slate, the North River Road right now because there's no poles with no infrastructure, as you've been told. But with the new North River master plan, I'm assuming our chief engineer's hearing all these things and knowing he wants to make our city entrances beautiful. And you can let your residents know that sometimes the best things come to those that wait. So hopefully it will happen sooner rather than later.
Just to follow Your Worship, because when you get down from Simmons out, as Counsel Beck knows, the only lights you see are the ones that the residents are putting out close to the, the street there, you know, that one lady there where Danny Murphy used to live and all that area. So things along that line, but it's a main street going in and out of the city. Like, it's sort of nice to have an angel floating around somewhere. Thank you.
Is that a real one? One real one? Counsel Bernard and Counsel Twill.
Thank you, Your Worship. I just wanted to give the chair kudos. I noticed we're getting some hybrid trucks and plug-in hybrid SUVs. So it's nice to see that the tenders are starting to go through the sustainability lens. So it's, that's nice to see, though. Thank you.
Okay. Counsel Twill, you're, we're going to be meeting on Thursday. When's the Public Works meeting? Wednesday. Okay, you want a question to ask beforehand? Okay. Oh, go right ahead. We want to make sure you get a question.
I know. I know you're the Grinch who stole Christmas, but nonetheless.
I'm looking for an angel.
What?
I'm looking for an angel. Thank you.
You'll, you'll have to look long and hard.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Anyway, you know, your point's well taken, Counsel McCabe, in terms of development that we're approving. I, I think it should be one of the prerequisites for approval of development, should be cost sharing when it comes to, you know, sidewalks, active transportation pathways, you know, 50/50. Again, I was optimistic about, you know, the development that we approved here earlier tonight. But when you have a development that's already existing and it's very troublesome, particularly for our senior citizens, people with mobility issues, I mean, look at what we did out in, out in Towers Road with the pathway. It's wel, very welcome. People are very pleased. It's now safe and, and, and people are very enthusiastic about that infrastructure. So I would just want to parallel what we did there. And, and again, the residents that I met with and Riley met with, these are people that made a great contribution to this community over the years, and I'd like to try to work with them. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, we got some resolutions? Five, is it? Seven?
Mayor Brown, can I ask a question on the first resolution?
I just, she's going to read it and then you can ask your question?
Yep.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you, Your Worship. Moved by Counselor McCabe, seconded by Counselor McLeer. Be it resolved that as per the conditions of the request for quotes for two 2024 hybrid trucks, the bid of Fair Isle Ford in the amount of $87,502.50 plus all applicable taxes be accepted, and that the mayor and CAO are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
So Counsel Bernard.
It's, I don't necessarily have a question, just wanted to make maybe a suggestion. When we're reviewing these resolutions and passing them, I'm noticing that it's indicating that we accept the bid for two new vehicles. The question I have is more around like, what are the vehicles? Are they replacing other vehicles? Are they just net new because of the fleet needs to be replenished? So if we could have some more context around the actual usage of the vehicles? I know it sounds that we, we approved the budget, but just like to have a little more context on when we're, when we're approving new fleet and, and why.
Counsel McCabe.
I agree. We can probably get that included in our reports a little bit better. Because Public Works oversees the fleet management, sometimes these fleet, these cars though are for police or they're for different departments. So even more clarity around who they're for, what they're used for, and why we're doing that. So Scott, I'll ask if maybe we can include a little bit more detail in our reports for that. So Council's clear.
Thanks.
Thank you, Chair. That's exactly what I, because I have no, I think it's great that we're getting two new trucks. I just don't know what they're used for or what, what part of the, the administration. So thank you for that.
Is that all right? Chief Engineer?
Your Worship, yes, yeah, we can add more information. At budget time, we usually explain it to council, but we can try to, especially, it's been almost a year since we last looked at the budget. We could definitely include that information in our reports going forward.
Okay. Question? Questions called. All those in favor. Counsel Bernard.
Yea.
Okay.
Thank you, Your Worship. Moved by Counselor McCabe, seconded by Counselor McLeer. Be it resolved that as per the conditions of the request for quotes for a 2024 plug-in hybrid SUV, the bid of Fair Isle Ford in the amount of $54,337.85 less federal incentive of $5,000 and provincial incentive of $3,250 plus all applicable taxes be accepted, and that the mayor and CAO are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Questions called. All those in favor. Contrary? Okay. Counsel Bernard, good. Okay, thank you. 10-0.
Moved by Counselor McCabe, seconded by Counselor McLeer. Be it resolved that as per the conditions of the request for quotes for one knuckle boom crane toolbox and dump box, the bid of Action Car and Truck Accessories Incorporated in the amount of $50,568.35 plus all applicable taxes be accepted, and that the mayor and CAO are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Questions called. All those in favor.
Yea.
Okay, 10-0.
Moved by Counselor McCabe, seconded by Counselor McLeer. Be it resolved that as per the conditions of the public request for quotation for survey data collection services, the submission of Morris Geomatics and Engineering Limited in the amount of $55,850 plus all applicable taxes, plus a provisional rate of additional work of $152.50 per hour, plus all applicable taxes be accepted, and that the mayor and CAO are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Question? Questions called. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Counsel Bernard.
Yea.
Moved by Counselor McCabe, seconded by Counselor McLeer. Be it resolved that as per the conditions of the request for quotes for eight 2024 police Ford Explorer hybrid SUVs, the bid of Fair Isle Ford in the amount of $542,754 plus all applicable taxes be accepted, and that the mayor and CAO are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Counsel Ramsey, go right ahead, sir.
Yes, maybe I should ask the chief when it's our turn, and I'm chair, I should know this answer, but what do we do with the old vehicles when they're taken out? Like, they're no good for anything else, chief. Are they like, we don't get any trade-in value or because, since police vehicles are different? I think that was asked one other time.
I think you can ask the chief engineer. He, he.
Oh, chief engineer? Go right ahead.
He's responsible for.
Too many chiefs.
Thank you. Chair.
Your Worship, through to Counsel Ramsey. So some of them get disposed of just because of their rate or number kilometers on them. And then some get, donate to the police academy up in Summerside as well.
No, you're, you look like a cranky. Thank you.
Okay, okay. Pretty open tonight there, huh? Must be Christmas. Question?
Questions called.
Questions called. All those in favor.
Yea.
Okay, 10-0.
Moved by Counselor McCabe, seconded by Counselor McLeer. Be it resolved that as per the conditions of the request for quotes on one 2024 tandem dump truck, the bid of East Coast International in the amount of $280,636 plus all applicable taxes be accepted, and that the mayor and CAO are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Questions called. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay.
Yea.
Counsel Bernard.
Yea.
Thank you. Yes?
Moved by Counselor McCabe, seconded by Counselor McLeer. Be it resolved that as per the conditions of the request for quotes on one heavy-duty work truck complete with chipper body and 75-foot aerial bucket, the bid of dry products incorporated in the amount of $429,900 plus applicable taxes be accepted, and that the mayor and CAO are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Questions called. All those in favor. Counsel Bernard.
Yea.
I think he's getting tired. Okay. Thank you, Counsel McCabe. As always, very well done. In economic tourism, culture and development, Counselor Trevor McKinnon.
Thank you, Your Worship.
Go ahead, sir.
Economic Tourism and Development Committee met on November 15th and November 8th. The Arts Advisory Board met on November 9th. Minutes for these minutes are included in your package, and there's two resolutions for consideration this evening. A few highlights. First off, congratulations to the Cork and Cast who opened on Victoria Row on November 24th. We look forward to having them previously seasonal operation as part of our year-round culinary offerings. The Charlestown Christmas Festival is off to a tremendous start with incredibly successful additions to the Charlestown Christmas Parade, tree lighting, and Victorian Christmas Market. A friendly reminder that the festival runs through January 2nd, and there's still plenty of festive cheer to come, including Capitol New Year celebrations. Capitol New Year is a partnership between the city and Founder's Food Hall and Market and will take place at Founder's on December 31st from 3:00 to 8:00 p.m. The Jack Frost Winter Fest will return in 2024, expanding over two weekends in February. This winter festival begins, sorry, brings excitement and vibrancy to the Capitol. And its return is excellent news for tourism operators, businesses, and the entire community. The recently hosted Arts and Culture Open House was very well attended. Feedback received will inform updates on the city's cultural policy and contribute to developing a collective vision for arts and culture in Charlestown. For those who were unable to attend the open house, an arts and cultural online survey is available on charlestownhall.ca until December 14th. Manager Wayne Long is here if there's any questions that we can answer. Thank you.
Counsel Twill.
Thank you for your report, Counsel McKinnon. Just an observation, I've noticed that one of the major, major rock groups from the '70s, that's had a lot of success in the '70s and '80s and, you know, played for the last 40, 45 years, a band by the name of Styx is going to be playing at the Credit Union Place in Summerside. So I did a little, little looking to see where they're going to be playing the night before, where they're going to be playing the night after. Styx is playing in Moncton the night before, and then following Monday, they're going to be playing in Halifax. And just wondering, you know, maybe it's a question for the board, Board of Directors that, have at the Civic Center as to whether or not we were in on, on that, on that band coming here to Prince Edward Island. I think it would have been well-served being hosted here in the city of Charlestown. Kudos to the city of Summerside, you know, for them taking the initiative. However, you know, we, we have the amenities here with the, with Civic Center on Kensington Road. That's one of the best bands in the world. That's one of the best bands in the world, and, and like I said, they're coming to Moncton, they're coming to Credit Union Place, and then they're going to Halifax, so I know you don't have the answer, maybe, maybe your manager, Wayne Long, I, I don't know if we were in on, on that, on that, on that band coming here to Prince Edward Island. I'm, I'm just, just wondering why it went to Credit Union Place and not to the, not to the facility in Kensington Road, thank you.
East Link Center, East Link Center. Counselor McKinnon, do you want to defer?
Yes, thank you, Counselor Twill, for your question, I will defer that to Manager Long.
Okay.
Your worship, through the chair, obviously, there's a lot of touring acts moving about within the entertainment sector. The three buildings that you mentioned are all buildings that are operating Ticketmaster Box Office System, which is owned by one of the biggest promoters in the industry Live Nation, who also owns Eventco out of Montreal, and I can only assume that that is their production, and they're routing the show to box offices of which they own, and that is an ongoing challenge for us here in Charlottetown, because we currently don't have Ticketmaster Box Office System, they're operating under another platform. So in short, it's likely as direct due to the fact that they're writing it, so they can double up with respect to their investment into those shows. Additionally, I would add that if a show is in Summerside, there would be jurisdictional rights, there's usually a, up to a two-hundred-kilometer jurisdictional rights where the next show can happen, and that's protection for audience.
Okay, Counselor Twill.
Thank, thank you, thank you for the explanation, Wayne. I know that we had our all-day sessions here, and the representatives from the Board, Board of Directors and management was here, I don't think, all right, the issue come up with respect to Ticketmaster, and, and I don't believe they employed that, that company or were involved with that company here in the city of Charlottetown, and more specifically the East Link Center, so I, I see that, and maybe I'm wrong, it's not, I'm not trying to be critical, but I see that as a disadvantage, you know, you know, we're the capital city, and I think it would have been nice to, maybe, maybe, maybe the Board, Board of Directors for the East Link Center can explore, you know, the advantages of becoming involved with Ticketmaster, and you mentioned Live Nation, I mean, look, you know, a band, a band like Styx doesn't come, come along too often, and they might never come back here ever again, so, you know, I was disappointed that, you know, that they're not playing here in the city, and again, full credit to Summerside, and I understand the rationale, but I, I just had to bring that up.
Wayne, when's the concert?
May.
In the spring.
Oh, 2024, okay, okay.
They're already advertising.
Any other questions? Counsel Ramsey?
And I agree with Counselor Twill, but at the same time, CBC Marketplace was on last week, I was watching it, or something like that, and a lot of these revenues are trying to get away from Ticketmaster and First Nation or Live Nation, because they take so much of, of the ticket sales, Wayne, am I wrong saying that? Like, let's say your ticket goes a hundred dollars, I'm naked, the whole majority, so the, the venue doesn't make a whole lot of money, like, they make very less on it, is what I understood when I was watching the documentary there last week on CBC, I just want to throw that out there.
Your worship, through to the chair, I can't speak specifically about Ticketmaster, but I can say they are one of the largest platforms in the world, and essentially in control of many venues across the world. Most venues in Atlantic Canada have now switched to Ticketmaster because of the strength they bring to a venue. Sydney, Halifax, Moncton, and I'm not sure if St. John has, has flipped yet, have Ticketmaster Box Office Systems. There was once an assumption that it was very expensive to operate it, but there's more specific customized deals now for municipalities, CBRM in Cape Breton recently went through a, recently went through a call for proposals, and Ticketmaster was the, was the successful bid of theirs, so if you look across the country, you will see them expanding their roots quickly.
Do we have a resolution?
No. Well, we have to, maybe a little less, but not.
No, no, okay, can we get the resolutions on the floor, because it's seven thirty-five?
Thank you, your worship, moved by Counselor McKinnon, seconded by Counselor MacLeir. Be it resolved that council approved the artwork proposed by Kelly Casely of Bricklage Productions for the Call to Artists Fiona Wood Public Art Open Commission process, and that the artists be contracted at fifteen thousand dollars, including HST, to create and install a public art piece in Knott Square, sixty Richmond Street, PID three-three-nine-zero-four-four, and further that the mayor and CAO are hereby authorized to execute standard contracts and agreements to implement this resolution.
Deputy Mayor Yankov.
Thank you, your worship, and thank you, Counselor McKinnon, for your report. I noticed in, in the Kelly's proposal, the, one of the visual supports is a bench on each of the squares. Am I to assume that we could eventually have a similar piece that she's creating for Knott Square, that eventually they will be placed in each of the squares, is that kind of the hope, or was it just she was showing what it could look like? I'm just a little unclear.
Counselor McKinnon.
Thank you, Deputy, for your question. I'm not sure if council had a chance, the piece of artwork is, the demo is in the other room there.
It's in the parking room.
On the table, I don't know if you want them to bring it in so council can see it, no?
Well, no, I don't think she speaks for council, but, no, I think people have saw, saw, yeah, thank you.
So it's there, so I will defer another answer from Doug DeMay here, on whether that's going to be expanded or not.
So, thank you.
If you wished, Wayne, if you wish to bring it in so the camera can see it, please bring it in, if you can.
Okay.
Anyways, just, just explain it there.
Sure, so through the mayor to Deputy Mayor Yankov, thank you for the question. So it's one piece that's for Knott Square, so the piece that is proposed is meant to, from above, represent the five heritage squares in the city of Charlottetown, so this whole maquette and the proposed piece will be, is being proposed for Knott Square, and the quadrant in the proposal you will see is on the Rochford Street side, but we've moved that to the, to the Sydney Street side, just because of the footprint of the piece, which is twenty-two feet by twenty-five feet approximately, this is a proposal, that might have minor modifications depending on the available wood and other factors, but yes, so the, the concept is that it's, it's four L-shaped benches, which are each meant to represent one of the five city square, or four city squares, and the central piece, which is representative of Queen Square, has a kind of central pillar that will have architectural details from buildings in Queen Square, including Province House and other buildings, as well as this central four-foot-in-diameter cookie, which will have historic years associated with the tree rings carved into it, so that hopefully answers your question. Thank you very much.
Counselor McCabe, looks nice, it does.
I was just worried if you transported, it would break, because I was going to comment on how, how exciting that project looks, I think it's going to be a really amazing asset, and I'd love to see something like that throughout all our squares in town eventually, where we're starting to use our resources to create comfort and welcoming in our squares and getting people in there, so that's an absolute beautiful piece.
Okay, question? Question's called, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Counselor Pritchard.
Yea.
Okay, okay, there it is, the music is here.
Moved by Counselor McKinnon, seconded by Counselor MacLeir. Be it resolved that council endorsed a twenty-five thousand dollar emergency grant for the guild, that the funds be allocated from the 2023-24 operating budget, which included five hundred thousand dollars for new external grants.
Counselor McCabe.
Thank you, so we've all heard the plea of, of the guild and that they're struggling, the interview on CBC, that they risk closing their doors without us coming ahead here with some supported funding, and I guess they're, I'm understanding that this money's going to be used to develop a strategic plan, a business plan for the, for the guild to move forward, is that at first, my first part of my question, from what I read, and also, will there be some sort of a report that'll come back to us as a council prior to decisions being made on future operational funding, to make sure that something is coming around where there, have a plan of action to kind of move ahead and, and not keep going backwards.
Counsel, Counselor McKinnon.
Thank you, Counselor McCabe, for your question. The money that they're requesting from the city, it's not for the strategic plan, there's money from the province is paying for that plan through, I think it's RSBC.
MRSP.
MRSP, they're going to produce a plan that, moving forward, these emergency funds are going to keep the door open, they only have funds right now that'll keep them going for two more pay periods, and then the doors would have to close, so these funds will keep the doors open for, until the next fiscal, April one.
Follow-up, counsel.
Thank you for the clarification, thank you, and I'm all about supporting the arts, but I guess I want to ensure before they come back looking for the next fiscal, that we're going to see some sort of an operational plan of how they're going to continue forward without having to keep coming back, we've gotten into this problem with some other not-for-profits in the city, and we just want to make sure that they're moving in the right direction, is there something that they are going to come back?
Counselor McKinnon.
Thank you, Counselor McCabe, yes, we're, stipulation that we'd like to see put on the places that the plan comes back to council before we allocate more funding.
Okay.
So we'll give them the twenty-five, if we vote on that, give them the money to keep the doors open, and then wait for the plan to come back, and then we'll reassess.
Counselor Beck, and then.
Anything you wanted to add, Doug?
Yeah, thank you, so through the mayor to Counselor McCabe, thanks for the question. So yes, as was indicated, the province is paying for the review, the review timeline is three to six months, the, that MRSP review involves high-level players in the arts and culture community who will be able to come up with a plan for the future of the guild, and it will have extensive community engagement as part of it as well, so we have city representation on that steering committee for that MRSP review as well, and I, I think it's important to mention as well that, yeah, as Counselor McKinnon identified, the funding is to maintain operations during this period, so that the report can be developed, because it will have an important next step, but I think it's important to identify also that, you know, the guild has, has, there's various reasons for the difficult times currently, you know, operational expenses are significantly up, and there have been challenges related to COVID and other, other challenges as well, so while this funding ask right now is for this kind of interim period, I think it's important to identify that the, the report will be a foundation for next steps, and while we might get it within three to six months, there, I think that request, the fiscal request for the next fiscal year should, I think, be considered separately at, at this time.
Thank you, Counselor Beck.
Counselor McCabe, I'll also mention briefly that we have ongoing representation on the board as well, Mr. DeMay sits on the board, the steering committee that he referenced, I'm sitting on that steering committee, so you'll have direct reports back to council too.
Yeah. I, I do remember when we, this came up before, I was actually, I think, the only person that supported the funding back at that time, so I'll support it again.
Sure.
I, there's no question on that, but I think one of the things I like here, and I mean, this is a buying time exercise, and we're trying to support an integral part of our arts and culture community here in downtown Charlottetown, which has served us very well over the last number of years, and I would hate to see, say, see us lose that, and I think sometimes we have to sort of step up and be, take on a little bit more major role than maybe we, we would necessarily like to, other than be in a, having board representation, on a, a representation on the board of the, of the guild, so I, I do see this as important work, I think the, the other thing I would like to say, I think, is the guild has done a lot of work themselves, they're trimming where they can, they're pitching in where they can, and they're doing, I think, janitorial work and custodial work and all that stuff, so whatever steps are trying to be taken, I think the guild is, has, has got their ten toes in, and I think we should be doing what we can, short-term, to allow them to get long-term solutions, to hopefully come up with, find better revenue sources, funding, whatever it might be, which MRSP will hopefully outline through the, the work that they're going to be doing, so I'll certainly be supporting it, and I hope, I hope we can get this through, thank you.
Yeah, so on page two-fifty in your package, you'll see the critical juncture. Page two-fifty, okay, Counsel Ramsey and Counsel Bernard.
Thank you, your worship, and yes, we're, we're all in full support of our arts and everything, is this just a one-time, Counsel McKinnon, I guess I'll go through you for, he, he's just a one-time grant, because adding this twenty-five thousand on, we're going to be over a hundred thousand, am I correct with that? And so those, next year, does it sort of revert back to where they don't get the twenty-five thousand, or, or is this going to be ongoing, this extra twenty-five thousand every year? Thank you.
Thank you, Counsel Ramsey, I will defer the technicals to this to Doug DeMay, thank you.
Monsieur DeMay.
Or Monsieur Long. Your worship, through the chair, there's really two components to this ask, as council is aware, the first one is emergency dollars to help keep the doors open, as our chair alluded to, until they can get such a time that the work is done through the Strategic Committee on the Operations planned to help position a path forward. I believe it's fair to say that the guild has already served notice to council during our workshop session, that they will be coming forward with an elevated annual ask for funding in terms of their grant, so this is emergency funding, but they will be approaching the municipality as a part of this budget process with an elevated request in their annual grant.
Okay, Counselor Bernard.
Okay. Wayne just alluded to what I was going to say, your worship, and said, when we had this conversation before, I think we were concerned about the amount of money that we were given, it was a fifty-nine thousand dollar grant we give now, and that was to go up to a hundred thousand, and this twenty-five thousand we give in property and lieu, but, you know what, I'm okay to see if they can't rescue, I put it, put this plan together, and see what, see what comes up from the plan, so I'll, I'll be approving, I'll, I'll locate this to myself too, so, thank you.
Yeah, it's just in the critical juncture, they don't talk about Wayne or Doug, about fundraising, raising new funds, is that Doug part of the plan?
Thank you, Mayor Brown, so there has been ongoing fund development since, I mean, since the existence of the guild, and that is definitely ongoing, so the outcome of the MRSP strategic business plan, really at the end of the day, is to find out how best to serve the arts and culture community in Charlottetown, but also how to ensure that there is a sustainable funding model for the organization, and what that means will be outlined in the report, so I, I can't speak to it exactly, and, you know, I, I just want to reiterate also that the guild has a mandate that's been in place since it's been created, and it's been updated, but it's been around since two thousand and four, and, and that was set by the province and the city at the time, so it's, it's providing a facility for artists to perform and display their art, and it's, it's essentially to, on behalf of the government of Prince Edward Island and the city, to administer programs to assist artists in Prince Edward Island, so I know from the, the process that we've undertaken with the recent cultural policy, that some of the counselors have, were in attendance at the open house, and through the survey, and through this whole process, space is such an important thing for artists, and this space in particular, it, it's recurring in surveys and in the conversations, the community is paying attention, people want to see the space succeed, so, you know, fund development is part of that, but there is just such a strong community support for, for that building and its potential, so I think at the, at the end of the, this process of the MRSP, it'll be the beginning of the next stages, and what that means, we can't exactly speak to as of right now, but, yeah, that's, that's all I'll say.
Counselor Druck.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. DeMust, could you just give me a, before we vote, just, what is our, how much money do, does the city give the guild for this year, if, if we put on the twenty-five thousand? does the city give the Guild for this year, if we put on the $25,000?
So, through the mayor to Counsel Drong, thanks for the question. So, we have an annual grant, operating grant of $55,000. And there is a, there was a one-time increase that was given during the budget process of $4,840. And there's a grant in lieu of taxes as well, which has been in place for several years, well over a decade. And the number is just based on their property taxes owing, but I believe off the top of my head, it is 20, approximately $24,000. So, that is the amount that we have given in this fiscal year so far. And, yeah.
Counselor McTair?
Yes, thank you. To the chair, the report reads, "The Guild faces imminent collapse and is urgently seeking $25,000 from the city of Charlottetown to sustain its operations." I think what's important to note is ultimately what will be the collapse of the Guild will be whether or not their strategic business plan is, comes to fruition and is executed and allows them to be sustainable into the future. So, I think that's the key component here. We, as a donation of $25,000, will be able to sustain its operations, but those two things need to align with each other because what's more important is that that strategic business plan gets completed. Are we, do we have any assurances that the, maybe MRSP is already working on that? I don't know if it's underway, if it's near completion. Will it align with how far $25,000 will allow the doors to stay open? Can someone address that alignment, please?
Counsel McKinnon?
Thank you, Counselor McTair, for your question. Just to reiterate, our $25,000 is not funding the business plan. There's $23,000 coming from the province, that's funding the plan. And as Doug had mentioned, it's three to six months before that report is complete. And we're going to request that it comes back to us before more funding gets allocated to them. So, does that answer your question?
No, I think, I understand where, I understand how the money is being allocated. I think it's alignment. So, I'm hearing you say it's three to six months before the strategic plan, business plan will be completed? I'm not sure if $25,000 from an operational standpoint might get them three months, it might get them two months. Is that going to align with when the strategic business plan is completed and then can be actioned in order to sustain the Guild into the future?
I'm going to defer this to, question over to Doug for a better explanation.
Your Worship, through the chair, the work of the strategic operations plan has commenced, so the rollout has commenced. The provincial government obviously is taking this situation seriously as they funded the plan 100%. There's a number of key players around the table. Counselor, with respect to part two of your question, how far does the $25,000 take us, and does it align with the actual outcome of the document? I'll allow Doug to speak further to that. However, we will say that there's a bit of a moving, fluid timeline in three to six months, so it's depending on how that needle moves in the process. I do know that MRSP is certainly interested to bring conclusion to this in a way that they can align with fiscals of other governments and other organizations. So, the work is, is well underway, and will be in aggressive schedule as we move into the new year as well. But I'll allow Doug to speak further here.
Thank you. So, through the mayor to Counselor McTair. So, to answer your question, this number of $25,000 was selected specifically just to ensure that they can, you know, provide programming, conduct the day-to-day operations, keep staff, keep the building going. You know, as, as was alluded to, staff are, you know, there was significant cutbacks in terms of staff, so staff currently are doing maintenance and property management. So, there's a lot of work going on to keep the building going and ensure that programming as a rental space can continue. There's a forecasting budget, which is monitored very regularly to ensure that things can continue for the time being. So, this funding will be able to sustain them during this period where this MRSP review is being conducted. And then, after which point, there is the following stage, which is the request for operating funding into the next fiscal year, which will, you know, come forward as part of the budget process, essentially. And, and then the next steps will be determined by that MRSP review, which will have the stakeholder engagement. It has all the high-level players in the arts community at the table, and should really help clarify what the community needs are, what the niche opportunities for the Guild are, and help develop a strategic plan forward. So, to answer your question, the $25,000 is a specific ask for this emergency, this moment, and then the next steps will be both the operating request and the MRSP review's conclusions and recommendations.
Which will be the new fiscal year, '24, '25? Okay, okay.
Great, thank you.
Questions called. All those in favor? All those against?
Yay.
So, I have Counselor Ramsey missing, so it's 8-1. Counselor Drong opposed. Okay? Do you want to go with them? Is that it? Yep. Counselor Drong opposed. Yeah, 8-1, and Counselor Ramsey left the room. Okay. Can we go to the next, which is environment sustainability? Thank you.
Thank you. Jessica Salmons.
Counselor Bernard, Jessica's on the line too, just so you know.
Yep. Your Worship, seeing it's the last month of the year, thought we'd give a little update, year-end update for 2023, for yourself and councils, Worship. So, start with transit. Meetings with Minister Stephen Myers and Minister Corey Deagle were very successful, as both ministers committed to adding another $475,000 to the current 180 subsidy. That's usually granted for a new total of $655,000, Worship, which allowed Capital Area Transit to introduce new routes in more frequent times. Also, three new buses have been ordered and are expected to arrive in the spring. This year, Your Worship, for the first time since transit was introduced in Charlottetown, transit ridership surpassed 1 million riders and is continuing to grow. This year, we launched, we launched the transit strategic plan update, which will guide us on decisions on the transit in the future. Expressive interest and request for proposals is underway to lead the design bill of the new $16 million transit depot. Since Fiona, more than 2,500 trees and shrubs have been planted this year by the city. The final phase of the climate action plan is underway with partner and community meetings. And Your Worship, that starts tomorrow. So, that'd be the final phase of the climate action plan. Staff completed the switch program with $9 million of FCM capital funds provided to homeowners for energy upgrades in the form of 0% interest loans. We are completing the energy performance contract to improve energy efficiency in our city buildings. A new food council has been created to work on the intersection of climate change and food security. And Your Worship, the final phase was completed on the bypass highway active transportation project. So, Your Worship, just a little rundown of projects that the staff's been working on all year, and so I want to thank them for their hard work, Your Worship, and wish them and council a very Merry Christmas. So, thank you.
And no resolutions? No, thank you. Okay. Next report is strategic priorities, communications, and intergovernmental cooperation. Counselor Norman Beck.
All right. Thank you for that, Your Worship. The strategic priorities, communications, and intergovernmental cooperation committee met on Thursday, November 30th, and the minutes are in your package. We've won resolution for your consideration. And if there are any questions, I will do my best to answer them. Thank you.
Counsel Bernard?
Thank you, Your Worship. Counselor Beck, and I know we had this conversation in chamber before, I'm just a little concerned here that I'm seeing visits arising from the minutes. And I know it looks like you asked a question. So, the wording that went to the minister on the funding for increased housing development, we talked about this four units in residential areas, just any lot. And at the time when we last talked about it, there was going to be a wording in there that we would be able to look at each one individually. I'm seeing here now that that's not the case. So, now, what the wording apparently is, at the request of the minister, the city proposes to remove any exclusive, singly-tatched zones and permit up to four units as a right right across the city as appropriate. So, that tells me that regardless of where an empty lot is, or somebody buys a house wants to tear it down, they can put up a four-unit in a predominantly residential area. Is that what I'm reading through this?
Counsel Beck?
Thank you for your question, Counsel Bernard. The "as appropriate" part was put in there because there was, if we recall, when this whole letter was brought forth, there were concerns that were, that were identified in the original letter. Sue Fraser and Deputy CAO Eleanor did some working on the letter in terms of what would be looked at. And part of it was, in consultation, looking at our official plan, public consultation coming back. And so, when we had the last meeting, I didn't see the word "as appropriate" in there, which ultimately did get sent in on the letter. So, the letter does contain it. So, basically, what I wanted was the minutes to reflect the fact that we had taken the original letter with the modifications and kind of expressed what we had discussed here at council. So, that was the purpose of the correction for that, was to say that we did do that, and it will still be part of the, the "as appropriate" will still be part of it, contingent upon public consultation, contingent upon changes to our draft official plan. So, I'm glad you mentioned it because that's something, I shared the same concern, and I wanted to make sure that that was clarified. So, it is clarified that that's what we were looking at. And, and again, the letter was, there was a lot of collaboration that went on with that letter in terms of looking at it with ministerial representation, CMHC. So, I think we're pretty confident in terms of, we're comfortable with the letter that did go forward. But thank you for mentioning it, and I hope that clarifies your answer.
Yeah, no, it does. Thank you very much for the clarification. And just, when I seen it, it was the letter, you put the minutes, I thought it wasn't in the letter too, but it did go to the letter, so, perfect. Thank you.
Counsel McCabe?
I need to put a motion on the floor. It's 8 o'clock, if we're going to keep going.
You don't have a question?
No, I was just going to see how, I had, I'm going to put the motion.
We need a motion in the floor to extend the time. Counsel McCabe, Counsel Beck, all those in favor?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. So, for the city of Summerside, Counsel Beck, I know that they, instead of using "as appropriate", they put, they added "except where technically not possible." Both the same. Okay, Counsel Twill?
Counselor Beck, thank you for your report. As you can recall, I made a request regarding the Municipal Government Act. I talked to you about that a few months ago. And I did receive a report with the CAO contacted the minister, Housing and Municipal Affairs, regarding any changes to the municipal act. It wasn't, that wasn't the request. The request was to do a comparative analysis of the Municipal Government Act compared to other cities in Atlantic Canada and across Canada, for example, Halifax, Fredericton, Moncton, St. John. I'd like to see how our Municipal Government Act stacks up with the municipal acts governing these cities. We are a full-service community, full-service city, and, you know, comparative analysis would require a lot of work, a lot of work, and I'll even add to make an amendment to my request, and that would be to retain a consultant that has the credentials and qualifications to be able to take our act and do those comparisons to other municipal governments across Atlantic Canada, you know, same size or bigger, other jurisdictions across Canada as well. And have that consultant come in and meet with, meet with city council, make a presentation to city council, so we could truly understand how they're governed compared to how we're governed. I, I've, my own experience with the Municipal Government Act and the way the whole thing was, was launched, and how we arrived at this, this particular document, I think needs to be looked at. The time is right to look at the Municipal Government Act. And again, I'll reiterate, it would be advantageous to bring in a consultant that has the credentials and qualifications, maybe Hudson College, maybe we can retain their services, and have them look at what the, what the differences are, what do they have in their municipal government's act compared to ours? What are the advantages, what are the disadvantages? So, we could look at it. You know, we've had this municipal government act now for a few years, and I think we need to look at it as a, as a city council that's governing this city, and how we're governed as a council. So, if you please put that on your committee's agenda and have a look at that, I'd certainly, I'd certainly welcome that opportunity to embark upon that exercise. I think it's, I think it's very important, and I'd like to pursue it. Thank you.
Go ahead there, Counsel Beck.
Yes. Thank you for that, Counselor Twill. And again, I guess I would, I would, I would reiterate that, you know, when you did bring this up before, part of the things we were wondering is, what are you looking for? In terms of comparative analysis, I'm not quite sure what, how that would look, but anyway, I think it's important, if we're going to go, like, there's not, doesn't seem to be a big appetite in terms of reviewing it, but in terms of understanding what it is that we are analyzing, or what areas we're looking to address with it, I think I'd like a little bit more clarification in terms of what that might be. CAO Eleanor, I don't know, I know we've talked about this, and we've exchanged some information with Counselor Twill. I don't know if there's anything else that you wanted to add to it that we might be going for, but I think from my end, I'll speak from my end, I'd like to, like, comparative analysis of what others have and that sort of thing. I'm not sure who would do that, or how that would be done, or what we, what we would be looking for. So, again, if there, I think what I would like to know is, what are some areas of concerns that we might have from our end, or that you might have from your end with regards to how the Municipal Government Act may not be working well for us here as a council? I think that would be helpful for me in terms of understanding as well, too. So, if there are some things that you could get from me, I think that would be helpful.
Send an email.
Yeah, and CAO Eleanor, if you had anything else that you wanted to add just before...
It's a 130-page document. Okay, go ahead there, CAO.
Thank you. Thank you, Your Worship, and through to Counselor Beck. I would suggest the process probably do this, would be a notice of motion, and have council vote on this, if this is something that council would like to undertake, as there'll be budget associated with it in terms, and resources needed at the municipality as well. So, I would suggest at council's next regular meeting, Counselor Twill add this as a notice of motion, and then it would go through to the Strategic Priorities Committee with a bit of a background from Counselor Twill, why he wants to do this, and then it comes back to council, and council votes on whether this is something that you would like to undertake or not.
Yeah, so you're saying outline the sections?
No.
Or areas, because it's 130 pages.
Just, just the rationale.
Okay.
Your Worship of why this should be undertaken, the value of it, just the same as when staff pitch other projects.
Well, the rationale is, I'm concerned with, with the divisions of power. I, I think the time is right to be able to embark upon an exercise. In order for me to say, what is it I'm looking for, I think I might have mentioned this before in this chamber, is that by... in this chamber, is that by doing that comparative analysis, I'd be in a better position, council would be in a better position to say, okay, here are some of the acts that are governing other municipalities, by doing that jurisdictional scan and having, you know, having retained professionals come in and do that kind of, do that kind of analysis, then it would put this council in a better position to say, okay, if we need to make additions or deletions to the Municipal Government Act, we'd be in a much better position, we'd be much more informed to be able to approach the minister of Housing and Municipal Affairs to say, look, we require the necessary changes. Now, it's been a while now, it's been a number of years since we had the Municipal Government Act, and I see that as only being helpful. I mean, we're always bringing in consultants to look at strategic plans, to look at, you know, other facets of the city's corporation, and the Municipal Government Act is extremely important. It's extremely important. I mean, we hear it in this chamber on a number of occasions, section, you know, A, B, and C, council can do this, council can do that, and I just think it puts us in a better position to see how we're governed compared to other municipalities across the country.
Okay.
I think that can only help us, and I would like to pursue that. So having said that, I'll take the recommendation from the chief administrative officer, and I'll serve a notice of motion at the January meeting.
With some rationale.
Yeah, but I think it'd be a very healthy exercise, to be quite candid with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, do you have a couple of resolutions, or one resolution? One.
Thank you, your worship. Moved by Counselor Beck, seconded by Deputy Mary Ancoff. Be it resolved that council adopt an official city tartan as presented, and if required, the city of Charlottetown visual identity policy be revised to reflect the addition of this tartan, and further that the mayor and C A O be authorized to enter into any contracts or agreements to implement this resolution.
We got a free tie with that, or, you know? Question? Well, question's called. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay.
Yes.
Okay, nine, nine, nine zero with Counselor Bernard out. Okay. Is that it? One more? Okay, go ahead, sir.
It's just a point about on page three eleven of the document, if you'd like to turn to there.
Okay.
I want to go back to something at our committee meeting that the deputy raised, and she asked the question, how do we know if they, how do we capture whether they did training, or if they're required to do training? So we have our, the advisory board policy here, code of conduct for public appointments, but one of the things that they are required to do was the virtual sessions that were set up by C A O Eleanor on the dates that are outlined in the report, but I'm wondering if there is merit in adding, just before the last line, which says by my signature, if we should incorporate something to the effect that all members shall complete a mandatory code of conduct training session prior to assuming, prior to assuming their role, or as part of assuming their role. That way, it's just clearly outlined in the, for future years, when we do the advisory committees, or if we have a replacement that comes in. Part of the outline is participating in the code of conduct training that all these advisory members just recently undertook. So I just think it may be a line that we could insert as either the last paragraph, just before the by my signature.
I think you may have to take that back to committee.
What's that?
You may have to take it back to committee.
Okay, okay.
What? Yeah, so we have to make it as a recommendation.
Okay, I'll do that.
Duly noted.
No problem.
Thank you, sir. Okay. Counselor McLeir, Finance Audit, Tenderant, and Administration. Can you just stand up there, Counselor? A little tired?
Yes, a bit of fall asleep. Finance Audit, Tenderant, and Administration Committee report to council, happened December 11th, no, I'm sorry, that's today's date. Okay, Finance Audit, Tenderant Committee met December 6, 2023, for their regular meeting, included in the package of their draft minutes that trust you've had lots of time to read. There's one resolution included in the package for your consideration, and the first reading of the amendments to the Grants Bylaw, 2023 G B 018. Respectfully submitted, I'll do my best to answer my questions, have Betty French, our manager of finance, with us here, and she'll be available as well for answering the comments you may have on information on finance. Thank you.
Counsel Twill.
Thank you for your report, Counselor McLeir. Last month, in your report, there was a section that was dedicated to the fact that departments' managers can spend up to $25,000, if I understand it correctly, without a resolution being passed by city council. Can you confirm if that's true? I missed the opportunity to ask that question last month. So again, does the managers of each department have the discretion to spend up to $25,000 without authorization, for example, of city council, or of authorization of the respective standing committee?
Counsel McLeir.
Thank you for your question, Counselor Twill. I'll defer that to Betty French, our manager. Thank you.
Thank you, your worship, and thank you, Counselor McLeir, thank you, Counselor Twill, for the question. Yes, that is correct. We sought clarification at the last meeting of the current existing procurement policy, which didn't directly address what the limit was. It kind of inferred to $25,000. So yes, that is up to $25,000 of budgeted funds, so the funds have been approved by council through the budget process. So $25,000 of budgeted funds can be approved by the department, and there are two signatures required for any purchase, so any invoice would have two authorizing signatures, and most of those purchases would already have had a purchase order before the order was placed, that would also have two approving signatures on it.
How old is the policy?
The procurement policy.
Yeah, how long has it been in the procurement policy? Many years.
Yes.
It's been quite a many years. Counsel Twill?
So, thank you, thank you, Betty. So once again, just so for my own peace of mind, it's not a requirement for the manager, the manager of any department for that matter, to bring that approval to the standing committee. They have the discretion and can arbitrarily spend up to $25,000 without bringing it to the committee.
That is correct.
Can you tell me the rationale for that?
I know it's operational.
Okay, just.
I'm just trying, I don't understand.
Yeah, but it's a pretty old policy. Can you just repeat it?
Can you explain that, please?
Yes, because it is operational, and because there are various processes in the procurement policy that address what happens. So things under $4,000 can be purchased with a limited purchase order, or on a credit card between $4,000 and $10,000. It's a, they get three quotes, so they're required to get three quotes for that particular item, and then whichever is the lowest quote, that's the one they go with, from 10 to, I may not, I'm trying to remember this off the top of my head, but there are specific direction in the procurement policy as to what happens, and it has also been approved in, council approved by the budget process. It is also challenging for the managers if they had to get everything, I don't know what cutoff limit you're looking for, but we have a lot of purchases, and if everything had to go through committee, and then had to wait for the next council meeting, it just slows up the process of doing our day-to-day business.
Yeah.
There would be, there would be hundreds of items that would come to committee and to council every month.
Yeah, so again, just to clarify, we're going to put forward, or you're putting forward, the Finance Committee, a procurement bylaw, which will probably deal with that. Counsel Twill.
Thank you, thank you again, Betty.
Counsel Twill, I just noted, this is your third time, we have to move on.
Okay, so.
No, 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 Counsel Twill, no, you're out of order, you have to sit down.
Okay, well, I hope you practice that policy.
Yep, no, I was just reminded, and thank you for reminding me.
I appreciate you striving for consistency.
Okay, let's come on, let's move on. Move on. It's eight twenty. Okay, do we have a resolution? Resolution?
Thank you, your worship.
Thank you, Betty.
Moved by Counselor McLeir, seconded by Counselor McCabe. Be it resolved that council approved the reallocation of funds from the extraordinary expenses budget line to the police budget in the amount of $261,230 to cover January through March 2023, cost to hire six full-time officers.
Counsel Bernard.
Mayor Bernard, have a question?
Yep, right after Bernard, then you, Counsel Bernard.
Thank you, your worship. Thanks for, by the way, putting that notice of motion forward. I know we've been looking for six officers for a while, probably in the past year.
Yeah.
What I'm wondering now is, I think the chief is here, what I'm wondering now is, so we've been talking about this for over a year, and I'm hearing now that we're 29 officers short, which I used to think it was closer to seven, eight, so I'm wondering if we should go back to committee and look at possibility of hiring 10. Six, I'm wondering, what's six going to do if we're short 29?
It's a start.
No, I know, I realize it's a start.
And it's, I think, Counsel McLeir, correct me if I'm wrong, or Betty, it was just to make sure that the money was there in the budget. This is only for one quarter. Next year, it'll be for four quarters, then your time's up by four, so it's close to a million dollars. This is only for one quarter, so we have to find a million dollars for next year. That's why if you add four more, six more on top of six, you're looking at 2 million plus. So we just thought, and the chief agreed, six is my understanding.
So why would you, why would they put in $261,000 for the quarter? Why wouldn't they put in for the cost a year?
No, we'll wait for the new budget to come in for 24, 25, 24, 25, and then you'll incorporate the million dollars. Yeah, just, just, we're just one, I just want to hear, yeah.
Okay, nope.
Okay, Counsel Twill?
Yeah.
Counsel Dran.
Hello, Counsel Bernard.
Sorry, after Counsel Twill, I'll take Mr. Bernard.
So we're going to be hiring, we are going to hire six police officers. We're still owed four officers from the provincial government, so really, that should take us to 10, right? No, really, I mean, that was in the resolution, I'm not going to let that go, Mr. Mayor, no chance. And, you know, I didn't see it, but the chief was on television saying we need 30 more officers. So, like, how did we get to this stage, that we need 30 more officers, and now we're going to hire six? You know, all this talk about hiring police officers, the city of Charlottetown is under tremendous pressure, because some of the facilities and programming that has been introduced by the provincial government, and it seems to be the onus is always on us, and I call it trickle-down economics, where, you know, they cut the ribbons, and we have to, we have to pay the freight. I don't believe it's fair, Mr. Mayor, and I don't know why we're not having discussions with the provincial government to say, look, you know, if you're there cutting the ribbons, you should be cutting the checks. It's not fair to this, to the taxpayers in this city, it's not fair to the corporation, and we're doing, we seem to be doing things here in piecemeal. There doesn't seem to be any rhyme or reason as to what's happening here. You know, six officers here, four officers over there, chief of police is on TV talking about 30, nobody knows what's going on here. Like, I'm just at a loss. Where are we, like, how did we get to six? Chief is talking about 30, province is talking about four, it's not really four, it's really two, nobody knows what's going on here. How do we expect to make an informed decision as to how many police officers this city truly needs to be able to effectively police the neighborhoods and communities in which some of them are still under siege? So why, where's the report, where's the, where's the report to council, so we can explain to the taxpayers as to what's actually going on here? Where's the policies? Where's, where's the process? Why isn't this stuff put in our packages, so we can make an informed decision? I'm at a loss, Mr. Mayor, I mean, figures are just popping out of the sky, you know, six here, 30 on television, four down by the province. Somebody please explain to me what exactly is going on.
Okay, I just want to get, Counsel McLeir, do you want to address that?
Yeah, just Counsel Twill, in somewhat of a nutshell, to the, your question on police, I'll leave that to the 29 number, the 30 number, I'll leave that to maybe under protection services, the chief can speak to that. But on the funding piece, and Betty can confirm this, and we'll be dealing with it probably at our next Finance Committee meeting, is getting ready to go to R F P to get a package ready to present to the province for, you know, the funding agreement has to be, has to be updated, it's been extended a year, and there'll be, so there's, you know, we're hoping that that's a document that's put together well, and, you know, I think we're going to be able to make a pretty compelling case for additional tax dollars from the funding formula from the province. It's probably not going to, probably not going to get everything you asked for, but it is something that, you know, that we are working on, and hopefully, within the next few months, we'll see what the results of that exercise is going to bring in terms of the tax share piece with the province.
Thank you. Counsel Bernard, and then Counsel McCabe.
Thank you, your worship, to the chair. I just wanted confirmation that these six new hires here were outside, over and above the four that are being discussed as part of the provincially funded positions, and these six would be, just to increase the complement of our 29 to 30 that we need, is that correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Counsel McCabe, then Counsel Dran.
Yeah, I think we know we're behind. We're, oh, sorry, we know we're behind, we've been told for a long time that we've been behind in our police, the resources for our police. Now we're in a crisis, because we have a community situation where everybody's feeling unsafe, you know, this is a quarterly commitment, and just so you know, no one's going to apply for a job for a quarter, so this is a long-term commitment, based on the city, so that's what we all just keep in mind, that we're saying we know we're behind, and we have to do better, not just because of what's happening in Charlottetown, but because we've always been behind, so I just wanted to make that clear.
Okay, Counsel Dran.
Thank you, Mayor Brown. I approved, or I moved the motion to get this to council for a debate. I know the mayor has requested six officers, and we'll put this in, and we're here tonight to debate that, and to hopefully approve it. My question is, we're getting four from the province, and that's supposed to be four new ones if we've agreed things, this would be six, so that'll give us a complement of 10. I'm concerned, is there any people leaving the city department to go seek employment elsewhere? So if we have a complement of, say, 60 officers, or 65, or 67, are we going to be down, down the number that have left? These come in, and we're still down. Like, here we are in December, we pass this. Like, here we are in, in December, we pass this, when are they going to be able to be hired? Are we going to wait for graduation? Uh, is there a thought, process in mind? I know we deal with unions, uh, with the, with our, our police department. Is there any way we can get officers that want to come home, you know, they're getting well-paid out west, or in Ottawa, or Vancouver, and to have a transfer in to not start at an entry level, um, uh, position? So there's, you know, we are in dire straits here. We have to look at getting a seasoned officer in that's very knowledgeable, rather than someone just coming out of the school that would have to take three years to, to learn. Um, I don't even know if, if we can get them out of school. I, I know the, the chief has expressed, uh, you know, his stress level in getting people to come here because they're very sought after now. So the, the question I am, is there a plan in place to keep our numbers up? If we have sixty-five and we're going to get six, that's, that's going to take us to seventy-one, and then we're going to look at it from there. And I, I, I guess, you know, I'm asking a finance chair for the police, but I, I don't want to turn around and, and lose this opportunity. You know, we're, we're looking at getting a quarterly payment for six officers. Are we going to be able to hire six officers? Are there six officers sitting home waiting to be hired? You know, or do we have six casual officers? Or can we, can we look at taking in some lateral entries rather than losing lateral entries to go somewhere else? Can anyone answer that one?
Counsel McLeir.
Now, thank you, Counsel Dran. Uh, I certainly can't give you the answer you're looking for. I think that if, if the chief, uh, can circle back to that when he, uh, sits in front, uh, on the human, on the protective and emergency services, um, I'd, I think he may be able to, uh, give you a better clarity answer on that, so if I could, could be handled that way.
Yeah, and, and CAO, Eleanor, can we defer this resolution for the police report?
No, not the resolution, it's a center of finance.
Okay. Go ahead.
Thank you, Worship, if I may, the chief does have a plan in terms of hiring the staff. Some of the, is transitioning part-time officers into full-time roles. Um, so there is a plan to build up the force and build it quickly, and chief has said that he's confident, uh, that these positions will be filled.
I'm going to request that, uh, over the next two or three days, that a detailed report be sent to all members of City Council as to how many police officers we have now, how many we're supposed to have now, um, where, um, the number thirty came from, right? That was, that was, uh, I was surprised by that announcement. I thought we were down a dozen. Now, now it's thirty. Um, I want to know with the resolutions that were passed by this council in the planning, planning, planning report, resolutions were passed by City Council, the commitments that were made by the provincial government, I want to know where we're at with that, and, what does the province, what does the province owe, owe the city of Charlottetown in terms of paying for four police officers, or six police officers, or whatever the case may be? I want to know how many police officers we have now, how many we have to fill in terms of vacancies. I want to know about the thirty, where it came from, national standards versus regional standards. I want to know exactly where we're at, where we're at, and since the government can fund all these wonderful projects in the heart of the city that's caused pandemonium, I want to know if they're coming to the table and paying for all, for all the programs and the consequences that go with it. I mean, it's, it's just, it just amazes me how all these figures are being tossed around, and I really don't know if we can make an informed decision as to what the actual plan is. I mean, I, it's just, I've never seen anything like it, never.
Thank you. Okay, question?
Questions called.
Question, did you speak once or twice? Okay. Okay.
And Eleanor may have answered the question. Um, one of them I have, so we've been looking for the office for a while. We know we were, we were down in numbers. Um, and it'd probably be a good idea if, if the chair of police could answer some of these questions before we have to answer this resolution, because I'm kind of looking at, wondering, how long would it take to hire six officers? I mean, I've never seen a resolution before where we're going to pay for something for three months, and then wonder where we're going to get the money. Like, i- if, if it's going to take a little bit of time to hire, it should go through the budget process, prepare it properly.
Yeah.
Like, I want officers in this city as much as anybody else.
Yeah.
And be heard to, to vote against the resolution, it's not against hiring police officers, but I do think that due diligence would say, if it's going to take at least a couple of months, that takes you into just about the new cycle, or well into the budget preparation.
Right.
So why don't we do it right?
Yeah, extraordinary expenses, that's where it's coming from.
I know, I understand that. So if you pull it out of extraordinary, that's there for, for a reason.
Yeah.
Then you got to find that money for the next year.
That's right, that would be part of the budget year twenty-four, twenty-five.
Right, so then why don't you do it as part of the budget process?
So you, you don't want to go with the six police officers now, you want to wait?
Well, I think, you know what, love to have them as soon as possible, but I think there's a lot of questions around here. Nobody knows how many officers we're talking about, nobody, because we haven't had police talk on it because the resolution's in the finance.
Mm-hmm.
But I mean, I think there's a lot unanswered questions to be able to vote in this prop- Personally, I would like to see it done properly. Go through finance, go through the budget system, how much it's going to cost, how many officers can we get?
Yeah, that's why we gave notice of-
The population is growing, I don't blame it all on the province, the population in the city is growing.
Yeah.
So we do need more police officers per population, um, but I think there's a lot of information that we're not getting, and to, you know, to throw this down here now, I, I just assume this easier goes back to the Finance Committee to talk about doing it part of a proper budget and hear what Police Chair has to say, if, if we could.
Clarified, do you want to go, defer this to the twenty-four, twenty-five budget year? Correct?
Pardon me?
You want to defer this to the twenty-four, twenty-five budget year? Go ahead.
To me, the prudent thing to do is, is to budget it, budget it properly. It, it looks to me like we're going to pull some money out of our extraordinary, which is the emergency fund, we're going to pay for them for three months, and then what? What if there's no money? So, I, I think you need it budgeted properly to say, we're hiring six officers, full-time officers, and we're going to be moving that ahead.
Do we need more police officers? Yes.
Yes, definitely.
KPMG.
I don't think anybody disagrees with that.
So next year, for the twenty-four, twenty-five budget, we have to find more money for more police officers and possibly more firefighters, so-
Yes, but, and, and Your Worship, I'm saying we do that as part of the budget consultation, we know where we-
No, but we have the committed funds in this budget year.
Right, but this is for a quarter. So what I think Counsel Bernard's saying is we need that commitment going into our budget that we're moving forward consistently with the six positions, because right now you're committing from emergency funds from the city that we're going to take this out and we're going to respond right now, and we all know that this is a commitment long-term, but I think what we're hearing is we need to see that and be committed long-term versus-
Noticement-
And I don't know, can he hire someone in, in, by the time we get to budget, it's in, what, eight weeks?
Notice the motion was given. We had a couple of months to flesh this out. It went to police, protective services, it went to finance, and now it's here in council. Either you vote for it or you vote against it.
But how can you hire someone until you get your budget passed?
Well, no, but we have a budget passed for this fiscal year, and we have to-
For a quarter.
But we have to budget for next year, and we know we have to budget six more, or twelve more. The KPMG report said twelve more police officers.
Can I ask a question then? Can you advertise for a full-time police officer without the committed funds for more than the quarter?
Oh.
No, I'm asking, can you, can the deputy, or can the chief of police put up an advertisement tomorrow, we've committed for a quarter, a quarter, two-hundred thousand, is he going to say, you're going to be hired for a quarter? Because we have not approved the money yet.
This, this, this could be amended to add-
Well, then, that's, those things, that's great. Move ahead, but right now, the way it is, you can't-
No, amend the resolution, that we're, we're committed to six officers, and the chief already told us at committee that these six officers that are hired now will be six officers next year. You can't hire them for three months.
But we haven't approved that money yet.
Yeah, because it's for the last fiscal, the last quarter of this fiscal year. He needs the money for this last quarter of this fiscal year, which is twenty-three, twenty-four. Did you hear that, Counsel McCabe? So this, this is for the last, and we discussed this at finance, too, this is for the last quarter. I made it quite clear, this is one quarter of four.
I'm glad you made it quite clear, Your Worship, but I think it needs to be written quite clear so that everybody in the whole world understands how clear it is.
So you add to it that it will be committed for the twenty-four, twenty-five-year budget. That's it. It's a friendly amendment.
Not just what, year by year, you're committing, right?
Yes.
You're not, so it's not just for the twenty-four, twenty-five-year budget?
It's, it's forever, forever a day.
Right, so that's how it has to be written.
But, but also, you, you, you should have an idea of where the money's coming from.
Okay, hold on.
You should have an idea of what we're cutting.
No.
I mean, we need police officers, no question.
But it's not something about the campaign.
So, wait, now, just one second. So, do you want to defer it? Like, guys, this, this has been on the radar, it, it's not like this just landed on us tonight. This has been out there for several months.
Yeah.
Like, we've had lots, we know that, that chief made it quite clear, this fiscal year is one quarter left. That's January to end of March twenty-twenty-four. If we hire, let me just finish, if we hire them now, we're hired, they're hired forever a day. We have to. And, and we need the police officers.
I don't disagree, but what, what, what I get from your saying is we're going to hire them, we're going to find some money somewhere, somehow, we're going to find-
Yeah, we'll have to.
And, and to me, I'd rather do it that, we're going to hire these officers, here's the money, here's where it's coming from.
Yeah.
That's what I like to, as opposed to, maybe we'll find it, maybe we won't.
But for this year, for twenty-twenty-three, twenty-twenty-four, it has to come for the, from the extraordinary expenses.
Can I go back to finance to get them to give us a plan? Find the money for six officers for the next, for, for ever and a day?
Well, it's up to the chair, where's the chair? John, Counsel McLeir. Do you want to go back? Well, just, John, what do you want to do? Counsel McLeir.
Yeah, no, um, anyway, I, I get the concern about the debate in, in the chamber around this, and, you know, the funding, where, where's the money going to come from? For it to be, you know, I committed for the twenty-four and twenty-five and ongoing budgets, um, there's a piece that we don't know here, um, as I alluded to, um, we're getting ready to go to the province to, uh, make our case for redoing, uh, you know, the portion of the, you know, of the tax piece, and, um, I'd have to think that we have to be somewhat optimistic that we're going to find more dollars there, and, um, I don't, maybe shouldn't be spending them before we know we have the money, but, um, that's, I mean, Counsel Bernard, I mean, the, you know, you either, you either cut something, or you, or we anticipate that we're going to get a bigger piece of the, you know, of the tax, you know, of the tax dollar, so, um, it's probably one of the, you know, one or two things, or some combination, that's going to solve the additional funding for, for this, uh, these additional police officers.
Deputy Mary Yankoff.
Thank you. Can I just, can I ask, Your Worship, that when we're having these debates, if people could be respectful and just take your turn like you're supposed to instead of talking on a turn, I'm just-
The system has detected that a few lines are still connected to the conference and will attempt to disconnect them.
Thank you.
If you wish to remain in the conference, please press star one.
Counsel Beck, and Counsel McKinnon, and Counsel Ramsey.
I'd also like to say something.
Yes, she is. Go ahead.
Um, we, we just sat through a couple of days of pre-budget-
Yeah.
-consultations. Following that exercise, we were asked to identify five priorities. I, I don't have them in front of me, but I think without public safety, hiring additional police officers, whatever it is, like, we, we are in a, we are in a, uh, recognized deficit with our complement of police officers in Charlottetown. The request has been made by His Worship a while ago to go to move, to hire from extraordinary expense account, whatever that account is, uh, to get the money for this year. We are committing, long-term, to police officers. We agreed, following sitting through the budget consult, pre-budget consultation process, to hear what our priorities should be. And our priorities come back collectively, we need more police officers. We have to find the money in our next budgeting process. That's what that exercise was for, and I think it came back pretty resoundingly clear. We got to get support to our police. Twenty-nine, sixteen, six, whatever it is. Right now, we need help.
Yeah.
And extraordinary times require extraordinary expenses, long-term expenses require long-term planning. We'll do that in February, January, whenever we meet, but I think we vote on this motion, we get the money in place.
Do it.
Let the chief take care of the hiring process, which is what he's tasked for, and try and get boots on the ground as quickly as we can.
Counsel McKinnon.
I think everybody here agrees, we need more police, we need the more services, but I'm just wondering, can this be tabled? I know we can't move it because it's a finance resolution. Can it be tabled until after the chief comes up and does his, we can ask him some questions regarding it, and then circle back to the resolution?
It's a finance resolution, so it has to be, uh, voted here in, in the finance package.
Mayor Brown would like to make comments?
Just one second, Counsel Ramsey, and then Counsel Matarde.
Okay. I listened to everybody's explanation and thoughts and everything, and I agree one-hundred percent. For the last couple of years, we've been going on in this council chambers how we need more police presence, everything along the line. We have extraordinary accounts there, whatever it's called, the mayor brought this up, we all agreed, we all had a chance to sort of debate this. The six officers that get hired is going to be used out of that part, and then in budget time, as I stated to a lot of yous one-on-one, in order to hire more police officers, like, some of your streets might not be paved this year that you're looking at, or things along that line, when, when we talk about budget, because we, either you want police officers, or you want the police, or, or your street paved. Like, if I can save a million dollars but not do some of the street in twenty-twenty-four, but put it off to the following year and hire six more police officers, I think we're far better off. Because I know myself, I had streets put off in my ward for a hundred years. So I, I'm just saying, like, the money's there, and when we sit down in March, this money's going to carry it on to March, we sit down in March, there's going to be, have to be some sacrifices, or we're going to have to raise taxes or cut services. That's our only tool right there. Thank you very much.
Counsel Matarde.
Thank you, Your Worship, uh, and to the chair. Um, I guess I'm just, I'm totally surprised we're sitting here having this debate regarding, uh, putting boots on the ground for additional police officers. We've been talking about this for, for the past year. Um, I think we need to move forward, and the long-term plan will be, as, as Counselor Beck indicated, went through the budget exercise, public safety was our number-one priority, uh, policing, additional policing, it'll work itself out, we will get additional police officers. We, as a council, have to make sure that that comes to fruition in the budgeting cycle for twenty-four, twenty-five, so we need to move forward and get boots on the ground as quickly as we can using this mechanism here. Thank you.
It's, guys, it's eight forty-five. Let's, question? Questions called. All those in favor, please raise your hand. Okay.
Yes.
Counsel Matarde, okay, ten zero. Is there another issue there? What was it?
Need to call folks who's opposed.
Who's, who's opposed? No, ten zero. Okay, want to go to Grant?
City of Charlottetown grants bylaw amendment. amend the City of Charlottetown grants bylaw twenty-twenty-three dash GB dash zero-one to update the City of Charlottetown grants program. It resolved that the bylaw to amend the City of Charlottetown grants bylaw twenty-twenty-three dash GB just dash zero-one be read a first time. Moved by Counselor McLeir, seconded by Counselor McCabe.
Shall it pass?
Be it resolved...
That was Justin. Council Matar.
Be it resolved that the bylaw now be approved as a city bylaw and that it be entitled City of Charlottetown Grants Bylaw twenty-twenty-three dash GB dash zero-one and that it be read a second time at the next public meeting of council, moved by Counselor McLeir, seconded by Counselor McKee.
Shall it pass? Pass. Contrary? No. Good.
Fair. Redeem myself.
Thank you. Is that it? Is that it, Counsel McLeir? Okay. Human Resources, Janine is still here, thank you, Janine. Human Resources, Counsel Matar.
Thank you. I send my apologies to all of council, public, and the committee for my absence tonight. The Human Resource Committee met on December sixth, twenty-twenty-three. The minutes of this meeting are included in your package, and there is one resolution for council's consideration this evening. I, I heard you say Janine is there, so I assume Emily is not there, so hopefully, Janine can answer any questions regarding the resolution brought forward tonight. Thank you.
Do you want to, okay, Counsel Twill?
Thank you for your report, Counsel Matar. As you know, the last couple of months, I've been bringing the issue up regarding city staff picking up drug paraphernalia in our playgrounds, sports fields, public spaces, our heritage squares, cities right away. I guess my first question is, what I want to know, what a lot of residents would like to know, is why is it the responsibility of city workers, whether it be Parks and Recreation or Public Works, like, who made the determination that the onus and responsibility is on city workers to pick up crack pipes and, and needles that could be laced with fentanyl, crystal meth, hepatitis C, or HIV? Why is the onus on city workers to pick up drug paraphernalia when it's not a program that we're sponsoring? Why, why, why would we do that? And why isn't the onus on, on the province that provides funding for, for programs like this? And then, when you take into consideration, employers are responsible for keeping workplace safe by providing necessary equipment, training about hazards and safe practices. In turn, workers must report safety hazards and following safe work practices. I mean, I'm getting correspondence from home and school associations in, in, in two or three schools in, in my ward, and why is the responsibility the City of Charlottetown, when we're not sponsoring, distributing drug paraphernalia?
Council Matar.
Thank you for your question, Counsel Twill. When, when you brought this forward the last time, Emily was there, and I believe she addressed the, some of those concerns as they were in the job descriptions of the, I want to say duty crew, but I could be wrong, and that there, it was probably in their collective agreements as well for picking up hazardous material and such. Now, I don't know if that has always been there and something that has evolved into things like we're seeing now, discarded needles, which might not have been problematic five, ten years ago. We've seen a surge in items, like you said, needles, pipes, other paraphernalia, drug-related material, and hazardous material. I too, you know, question that, the responsibility of city staff to do that. We know that the government is going to be implementing as part of the forestry variance, a cleanup crew to do that in, in around the affected area. Does that mean that the city staff will completely stop doing that? I don't know. I think that's an administrative question that I would like as well for the manager of HR and, and the CAO to address, to determine, going to go forward now that the government is implementing those services. What does that actually mean then for city staff and the safety of city staff going forward?
And Janine, could you just ask our manager if she could write something up and send an email to all of council on that? Counsel Twill?
Thank you, Counsel Matar. I appreciate, I appreciate your response, I really do. But I think from a policy perspective, I don't think it's, it's our job to be going around, pick, you know, my concern is the safety, not only the residents, regardless of what the demographic is in our city, but I'm very concerned about the safety of our employees. I really am. And I really question why the onus and responsibilities on our corporation to, to be picking up drug paraphernalia when we're not sponsoring the program. The province is sponsoring it, then they, they should be held accountable, and they should be out there cleaning up the drug paraphernalia. And the other question I have, and I've asked this question the last couple of months, in terms of the services and kind that we're providing, do we have an exact dollar amount as to how much time and effort our crews are spending picking up drug paraphernalia? And, and if we do, or we should be, we should also be sending the bill to the premier's office. Thank you.
I'd like to answer, address Counsel Twill. Thank you, Counsel Twill. Again, I, I support, I support your concerns as well. I think that there is a, a little bit more at play here that needs to be addressed from an, an HR perspective, a collective agreement perspective, a job description perspective. There are a number of things. I don't disagree that it should not be the responsibility of staff, and staff safety is a paramount of concern, and I, and, and I support that fully. I think it's a discussion that I have to have at the committee level with our manager, Emily, and the CAO regarding, you know, the, the terms and conditions of the collective agreement that are laid out within there around the, the, the picking up of hazardous material. Does it specifically outline that it has to be needles? I don't know.
Yeah.
And those are great questions, I'll bring that forward regarding how much, the collection of, of this type of material and how much of this is being done and the cost to the city. I do not have those numbers. We can certainly look to see if there's any type of metrics that will enable us to kind of get a better understanding and picture of what the cost to the city has been in relation to that, but I don't have that...
Okay.
...information in front of me here this evening, and I have to assume Janine would not have that information either.
Yeah.
So I'll take that back. Thank you.
Thank you, Council Matar. So we have one resolution?
We do, yes. Thank you.
CAO?
CAO, I'd like to read that.
She's reading it right now.
Okay, sorry, I'm just behind you.
Moved by Counselor Matar, seconded by Counselor Ramsey. Be it resolved that the City of Charlottetown accepts the proposed two percent increase to management non-union employee salaries for twenty-twenty-four, as per the attached document effective January first, twenty-twenty-four.
Questions called.
All those in favor, raise your hand.
Yay.
Yay. Contrary? Ten-zero. Okay, next report. Thank you, Counsel Matar. Thank you, Janine.
Thank you.
And the next report is Counsel Kevin Ramsey, Protective and Emergency Services.
We almost should have left earlier, Chief, you and I. Protective Emergency Services met on November twenty-eighth. The minutes are in your package. We have one resolution, your worship, and at this point, I would like to thank council for approving first quarter for the new officers that the chief is going to be working on with HR. And before I end and before we, we get roared at each other here, from behalf of my family and all of, all of our council and all their family, a very Merry Christmas and a happy and prosperous New Year. So, we have one resolution, your worship.
Thank you, Counsel Ramsey. Thank you very much. Counsel Twill?
Counsel Ramsey, in the provincial legislature, it was brought up recently that the province admitted illegal drug usage on the site of the outreach center. This went on for a number of months. Minister of Housing and Municipal Affairs stated that it was an operational issue, but when the province found out, they reversed the policy. So what I would like to know, considering our police department was on-site when a lot of this illegal drug usage was taking place, did the City of Charlottetown have any involvement with the decision that was made regarding illegal drug usage on the site of the outreach center, along with other illegal activities that were taking place there? You know, this, this went on a number of days in the legislature, the MLA, the interim leader of the Liberal Party, Hal Perry, asked these questions. I certainly appreciate that he asked these questions, because up until this point, we, we never really had anyone sticking up for our community and, and, and trying to help support our community. We had to go to Tignich to get an MLA to go to bat for us, but nonetheless, we did have, we did have an MLA that went to bat for us, and I certainly want to, I want to thank him publicly. But I, I, I want to know what involvement the City of Charlottetown had with regards to illegal drug usage on that site. Somebody approved it, and I'd like to know, as the counselor for that ward, I would like to know who approved it.
That's a good question, Counsel Twill. Thank you. For Chief, did we have any involvement in that? Or was that just brought in from, from the minister, with all, from the adventure group and everything along that line?
Your worship, certainly, you know, part of our duties is to work with agencies and bodies that, that operate these facilities, but I can tell you that no point did we condone the use of, of drugs. We understand it's a complicated issue when it comes to addictions, and so we know there's, there's no easy solutions in that, and certainly, what we saw there was certainly concerning to a lot of people, but it's, again, an area that was set up to offer services for people that were struggling with addictions. Our main focus was to reduce the impact to the broader area, and certainly, you know, as we, as we worked with our partners to do that, you know, it was finding the balance of, of, you know, certainly understanding the complex issues of addictions, but certainly not condoning, you know, drug use. I think that would be fundamentally against, you know, what we stand for as, as a police service. But we know that that is, is not easily delivered upon when you're dealing with such complex issues, and we cannot be there twenty-four hours a day, and certainly, the people that are there, you know, we, we'd hope that they would seek the assistance that, that was provided there, but I can be clear when I say that we certainly did not condone that.
Okay, Counsel Twill, your second time.
Well, that's great, Chief. Okay, so, we had no involvement with that, we didn't give approval. City of Charlottetown, in any which way, shape, or form, did not authorize illegal drug usage on the site of, of the outreach center on Use the Street. That's good, okay. So, someone took it upon themselves, whether it be provincial bureaucrats or NGOs that are operating that facility, the working group, whoever that working group consists of, what I'd like to know, or what I'm requesting, Chief, as, and I'm requesting you to, to carry out this responsibility, I'd like an investigation as to who authorized illegal drug usage on the site of the outreach center in between two city schools, across the street from a local business, next door to a senior citizens' complex, the residents that live in all of our street, a stone's throw away from a funeral home. I'd like to know, or my request is, I want an investigation as to who authorized illegal drug usage in the geographical land of this city. This, this was prohibited? This was unauthorized? The province says they had nothing to do with it, but it was an operational issue, but they switched the policy. They reversed the policy once they found out. They only, they only admitted to it because they were requesting in the, in the legislature. So, that's, that's my, that's my request. I, I want a full investigation as to who authorized the illegal drug usage on the outreach center site.
Chief?
I guess, um, your worship, I'd need some clarity on what the scope of that investigation. Is it, is the counselor seeking a criminal investigation on that, or is it...
I know it's been asked in the House, and the, the minister didn't answer, so maybe you have to go to the minister, maybe you have to go to some of the MLAs.
Certainly, your worship, I'd like some time to reflect on that request.
Can you get back to him?
Yeah.
Or can, CAO? No, Counsel Twill, just one second.
Thank you, worship. So again, this is another example of where we would use a notice of motion, where council votes on this altogether. This isn't a simple elected official information request that we just return information, this is asking for an actual investigation into something which takes resources and time, and that's something that we would ask direction from council for versus an individual elected official. So a notice of motion would be the step to take for that one.
Yeah, no, Counsel Twill, no, please sit down, I've been... No, 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 please sit down. No, you, she's already given the option. No, no, sit down. We're moving on. Because twice, no, that's, that's it. Yeah. No. Twice. This is your third. Thank you. Counsel, yeah, I, I know, this is, this is all night, four hours into it. Let's go to ten. Anyways, Chief, a notice of motion will come through, then we'll look at whether it's going to be a criminal investigation or just an investigation to find out who the culprits are, but we'll wait for that notice of motion. Counsel Ramsey?
Yeah, and I think that if it's, we heard, and we know that the province, it's the province's land, it's their program, and they sort of contracted out, and they, in my personal view, the people who was running the program must have allowed that there, and then all of a sudden, and I, I watched the same thing, like, in the House, Counsel Twill, and then all of a sudden, the minister said, no more.
No more?
So I, so, you know, like, I'm, like, I'm like the chief, like, like, I don't know how much more you can do. Like, it must be with the, the contracted group and the province, like, they must have got together because of everyone roaring and screaming at them and saying, okay, no more. I, I don't know, but, you know, that's a good point. Yeah.
Okay, do we have a resolution?
Yes, we do.
Can we put the resolution? No, no, we're moving, yeah, you, just get your notice motion. No, yeah. Okay.
Moved by Counsel Ramsey, seconded by Counselor Beck. Be it resolved that the Public Works Manager be authorized to cut grass, remove trees, garbage, and any other materials or debris, dangerous or otherwise, clean up and properly dispose of the same at the owner's expense at the following properties located at twenty-seven Hutchinson Court, PID five-eight-four-eight-two-one. Warning posted on November seventh, twenty-twenty-three. Pictures taken. Satisfactory action to resolve the issue not taken. Twenty-seven Summer Street, PID five-four-seven-eight-ten. Warning posted on October thirtieth, twenty-twenty-three. Pictures taken. Satisfactory action to resolve the issue not taken. Fifty-one Bayfield Street, PID three-six-one-one-six-two. Warning posted on October twenty-third, twenty-twenty-three. Pictures taken. Satisfactory action to resolve the issue not taken, in accordance with the terms of the Dangerous Hazardous and Unsightly Bylaw of the City of Charlottetown.
Questions called? Okay, all those in favor, please raise your hand. Counsel Matar?
Yay.
Okay. Thank you, sir. Parks and Recreation. Counsel Twill. Frank, thanks for coming up.
Thank you. Parks and Recreation Committee did not meet this month. One of the highlights over the last month was elected officials and senior staff had an opportunity to take a tour of Simmons, to get a progress report. A lot of, a lot of construction has taken place thus far, and as is pointed out by our... A lot of, a lot of construction has taken place thus far and as is pointed out by our manager of Parks and Rec and by the contractors and the onsite, onsite folks that are there overseeing the project, I think the gentleman's name is Kerry Taylor.
Yep.
And he made it quite clear, we are on schedule for the facility to be opened next October. Having said that, I'll do my best to answer any questions that members of council may have. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor Yankoff?
Thank you councillor Twill for your report. I know that you and I have been working on this a little bit, back and forth with email. I'm just wondering if you've gotten any resolution around the fact that we have that hideous chiller in front of Founder's Hall that was supposed to be just there for last year during Canada Games and it was to be relocated. It's in a, it's very noisy, it's very disruptive for the, the small business that's trying to run their business beside it. And I'm just wondering, I know that Founder, the CEO of Founder's had offered a piece of property to afford to be relocated on and I'm just wondering if, if we're going to be successful this year or if we're going to have to be the bearers of bad news to a broken promise to the residents and the business owners. Thank you.
Councillor Twill?
Thank you very much. That's a good question. It's a really good question. I've attempted over the last number of months to come to a successful resolution on the, on the chiller. I've had discussions with the manager. I have heard from the entrepreneur that runs local business there, they're very upset with, with the chiller, very upset with the way the whole thing unfolded. I've made that known to our Parks and Recreation manager. He does have an explanation, I'm going to turn it over to him to explain, but, you know, I want you to know that I do share the concerns of the community. I have made that quite clear. I've made that quite clear. And I, I believe that this will be the last year for that monstrosity that's down there and the noise that it's, that it's making. When we purchased the property, the whole idea was to maintain a green space in front of Founder's Hall. That was the aim and objective behind purchasing that property, was to have it preserved, protected as green space. That was, that was the aim and objective and the motivation for purchasing the property. So, having said all of those things, I will turn it over to our manager of Parks and Rec. Frank?
Mr McKinnon, sorry. Mr Quinn?
Thank you, your worship, through Chair Twill, Deputy Mayor Alana. I believe I did send an email that explained our situation and things haven't changed from that. Even though it's a portable chiller unit, it requires permanent infrastructure to have that chiller unit sitting there and it will be a costly endeavor to remove it. We are looking at, if the city decides they want to move forward with the Roundhouse Park development, which I'll be bringing a draft plan to council hopefully sometime in January with an updated cost estimate, then you can look at that and if you decide that you're going to continue with a potential artificial surface unit, artificial there, it will require chiller unit, then we'll look at possibly, we'll look at relocating it at that time. The site is very tight, so wherever this unit's going to go, it's not a perfect location. So, it is a tight location, so this new plan, when it comes to Roundhouse Park, you'll be able to look at it and see if this is something that is suitable for this location. This is the only location right now that we can put this portable artificial rink system that Canada Games helped to fund. So, if we want to operate it this year, it would have to be at this location and it requires, like I indicated, more than just a, just a chiller unit there, you know, you require phase three electrical, electrical wiring that supports the chiller, concrete pad that holds this chiller, which is very heavy, and also 1% grade property over a 60 by 140, so it's a, quite a level piece of property. Hope that answers your question.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you for that. Councillor Twill, do you think that maybe you could take back to your committee that we could get a cost estimate for what that would cost so that we, at least we know as a council, going into the budget discussions on moving this for, in the future?
Councillor Twill?
Absolutely, and I'll take it a step further. You're welcome to attend the meeting.
Okay. Yeah. Welcome, that's out. Okay. Thank you. Yes. And Frank, what was the name of the engineer from Halifax with Harborside?
Mike Gallagher.
So is it Mike or is it Kerry overseeing the project? Or both?
They're both. He's the lead, Mike is the lead from Halifax and Kerry's a local one.
Yeah, Kerry Taylor. Anyways councillor Twill, that was a great visit and gave us a good insight on what's going on. Is it 50% done? Is that what we were told?
I did hear the next...
I think it's 50%, but it's on schedule. Councillor Beck?
Yeah, just a quick comment really. I noticed in the minutes of your report councillor Twill, and thank you for that. No, sorry, no, it was in, no, it was in the minutes from, you're right, you don't have a report. Jeez, he's still sharp, four hours and 15 minutes later.
He's just getting up now. He'll be driving around later. He'll be driving around later.
Jeez, yeah.
What was your question? What's your question?
Minutes, in the minutes at the start of the report. Jeez, I'm feeling like Eleanor. Anyway, we're going along. In the minutes of the report at the start, it was referenced that the Victoria Park roadway closure was going to come up at the next meeting and there was no meeting. So I would just like to, I hope that that would show up in the next meeting as well too, and I'd like to have some further discussion about that and hopefully we can have some more.
Can you just answer his question?
No, it's no question. It's just I hope that it's on the next meeting.
Councillor Twill, you take a seat there.
Want to thank you councillor Beck. I agree wholeheartedly with you. We've asked our staff to do some, do some research and he committed to, to gathering the information, to see what that would entail. I agree wholeheartedly with you and I think a good majority of our citizens do as well. I think it'd be a welcome, welcome opportunity for passive and active recreation. And you know, people are still, even though it's open to vehicle traffic, people are still using it like it's an active transportation pathway now. So Frank, that's, Mr Quinn, Frank, that's something we're going to be discussing at our next Parks and Recreation meeting. Thank you for bringing that up councillor Beck.
Thank you councillor Beck. Thank you councillor Twill. No resolutions? So we only have one left under new business, one resolution. Do you want to read that resolution, CAO Eleanor, and then you get a notice?
Thank you, your worship. Moved by Deputy Mayor Yankoff, seconded by councillor McKinnon. Be it resolved that effective immediately, the following appointments to the food council as recommended by his worship, Mayor Philip Brown, be approved. George Bitar, Nick Chindamo, Tara Matheson, Kirsty McCallum, Elliot Senachal, Stephanie Stanger, Cheryl Wang, Martin Watson.
And you do have a brief resume if you want. Further than that, Jackie is ready to provide. Councillor Beck?
Thank you for doing that.
No, thank you. Question call? All those in favor?
Yay.
Okay. Councillor Matar, yay?
Yay.
Okay. No, 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 there's another, there's a notice of motion. Councillor Twill, notice of motion. Yes. Hold on, hold on. She just reads it.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Yeah. CEO, can you read out this notice of motion from councillor Twill?
Thank you, your worship. So there is a notice of motion by councillor Twill tonight for consideration at a future meeting of council. That motion is that the city of Charlottetown establish a municipal bylaw to prohibit the distribution of drug paraphernalia. So the process from here is it will go to committee, the committee will consider it. Councillor Twill will provide a little bit of information to be included in a report to that committee, and then from that committee, it will come back to council and council will have a vote on a motion, on this motion. And that'll be at a regular council meeting. Thank you.
Can you just get that from her? So, there is no meeting in December, so we have some second readings? So do we leave those till January or?
No more meetings in December.
No, we might have to have an emergency one in January. Okay. Do we, I need a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
Motion adjourned? Okay. Moved. Thank you very much. Merry Christmas.